Hello everyone, I just, before the board meeting gets started. Hello, hello everybody. Before the board meeting actually gets started, I do want to remind everyone, especially those that weren't here earlier, that we do have a collage on the wall, photos of our beautiful Senator Betty Davis, that we would like for you to sign before you leave. So if you could please make sure to sign the collage, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So good evening everybody and welcome to the ASD Boardroom. If I could have your quiet just for a second, I'm going to go over a few quick safety rules. As you can see, it's a very full house tonight. We have no planned drills tonight, so if you hear something, it's real. Normally that's not an exit in the back, but with this many people in here, I've taken the no exit sign. So you've got an exit there, and then four exits on this side of the room. Once everything gets started and the band moves, we'll figure out seating again. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that if you see something, say something. And note where the exits are around you right now. Thank you.
So I am going to call, oh, well, maybe not everybody's here yet, hold on. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started and Ms. Nellen can join us. So at this time, I'm calling to order the school board meeting. It's Monday, October 22nd, 2018. And Mr. Donnelly, if you could do the flag salute, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'm just going to move for approval of agenda. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, agenda is approved. So Ms. Celeste, where are you? Oh, okay, hi. So I just wanted to share a story real quick, because since I'm in charge of this whole thing, kinda. I mean, you're in charge, but I'm in charge of the board meeting. You know, Betty Davis has a special place in my heart. And I always give her all the credit for me being elected. Because when we were both running at the same time, we put out a flyer that we put both our faces on. And I know that they probably voted because I was next to Betty Davis. And so I just always appreciate her support and all the wisdom that she's given me over the years. So I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Thank you for that. And so we're going to start with the band, the drum band.
...
Before the Clark Informers come up, I... Okay, thank you so much. I don't know if it's... Okay. Now, before the Clark Informers come, I want to just say thank you to everyone that is here to support Betty Davis. I mean, if you look around this room, it just brings tears to your eyes because you know how hard she has worked, not only for this community, but for this state. And so if I could just have everybody stand that is here to support Betty Davis, and give her a round of applause, please. I just wanna see. Now, turn around and look at all the people here. Thank you, Lord! Thank you, Lord! Thank you. Okay, you can be seated. And now, "Thank you, Lord," is all I can say, is "Thank you, Lord." I don't care. Thank you, Lord. And so we'll have the Clark Informers come.
Good evening. We are members of the Clark Middle School Informers, and we're here to help celebrate and present to Senator Betty Davis an Anchorage School District resolution. Before we share this official record, we would like to acknowledge Senator Davis's life of service and accomplishments in our state, local, community, and school board. Mrs. Davis has been a resident of Anchorage for more than forty years. She arrived here with her husband, Troy Davis, who is a member of the United States Air Force. She has two children and four grandchildren, who are all products of the Anchorage School District. Mrs. Davis obtained a bachelor's degree from Grambling State University. After her retirement from the university, from the Grambling State University, she served as a member of the Anchorage School Board for eleven years, and as president and vice-president of the school board for two years. Betty Davis was elected as an Alaska State Representative and Alaska State Senator, where she served numerous legislative committees, including the Chair of Health, Education, and Social Service Committee. Mrs. Davis is a member of the League of Women Voters, Delta Sigma Theta, Saunter Club of Anchorage, NAACP, and Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. Mrs. Davis enjoys cooking, playing scramble, and fundraising for worthy causes. She was widowed after forty-six years of marriage. Senator Betty Davis held CA during her recent tenure on the Anchorage School District School Board. Her focus was on funding for pre-kindergarten education, reducing the dropout rate, and equity for all students.
A board's resolution is a formal document that makes a statement about... A board's resolution is a formal document that makes it... Senator Betty Davis's contributions to Alaska is truly worthy of this cause. The resolution for Senator Betty Davis is written as follows. Whereas Senator Betty Davis is among Alaska's top advocates of children, education, health, and social services, and... Whereas Senator Davis began her career in so... began her career in social services, working at the... in family services, working at the Alaska Psychiatric Institute as a nurse and social service, social worker, from 1972 to 1975, and continued working in various positions with the Department of Health and Social Services, such as childcare specialist, social worker, and foster care coordinator through 1989. And whereas Senator Davis became... began, began... And Senator... And whereas Senator Davis began her long political career when she was elected to the Anchorage School Board from 1982 to 1990, serving two years as board president. And whereas Senator Davis became the first African-American to serve in the Alaska State House of Representatives from 1990 to 1996. And whereas, in 2000, Senator Davis became the first African-American ever to be elected to the Alaska State Senate. And whereas Senator Betty Davis was known as the conscience of the legislator, passing legislation that includes education, social issues, and economic development. And whereas Senator Davis has served on many local and national boards, councils, task forces, and received countless awards for her service and dedication to this state and community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Anchorage School Board recognizes the outstanding service that Senator Davis has provided at a local, state, and national level.
This resolution is passed and approved on this 22nd day of October 2018, signed by the following Anchorage School Board members: Starr Marsette, School Board President, Seat B; Dina Mitchell, Vice President, Seat F; Alyssa Snelling, Treasurer, Seat G; Alicia Hildy, Clerk, Seat E; Dave Donnelly, Seat C; Andy Holman, Seat D; and Dr. Dina Bishop, our Anchorage School District Superintendent. Thank you.
Senator Davis, we sincerely thank you for your selfless service and commitment to this great state we all call home. You have made a great impact on our generation and many generations to come, and for that we say, "Thank you."
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the Clark Informers, thank you so much. And so now, can we... You all take your seats, because we're gonna have some comments. So I have on my list, in this order, Pastor May will follow me, Kevin McGee with the NAACP, aka Ms. Jackson, Delta... The Deltas, Rosa Foster, and Pastor Patterson. I wish I was facing this way, really, but I'm really speaking to the school board. Do you have a taller... No, that's fine. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Clark. I mean, that was truly moving. I, you know, it just brought back so many memories for a lot of us, and so I just thank you for that tribute. Thank you, President Starr Marsette, School Board members, for allowing this opportunity to put together a tribute for our senator, the one and only, trailblazer, friend, former boss, mom, and, as was shared, the conscience of the legislature. The list actually goes on and on. Our Senator Betty Davis. My name is Celeste Hodge-Groudon. I am the Executive Director of Shiloh Community Development, Inc., a nonprofit organization that empowers youth, minorities, and the disadvantaged. Many people often wondered how I connected so closely with Senator Davis. Well, I've known Senator Davis for decades. Her husband, as was shared, was in the military, and so was my father. My brother, Tony A. Davis, and her son, Tony B. Davis, were actually best buds, and still are today. And in fact, he... My brother is his kid's godfather. That's how close our families are. And you know, as the Clark Informers and the Drummers were up here, I could just see Senator Betty Davis's face, just so proud, you know, just so proud. I see her seat, right here. So I actually got a chance to really work with Senator Davis when I served as the president of the NAACP. Thank you. There were, and still are, issues of concern within our community, and she was the go-to person. Throughout my entire adult life, Betty Davis has always been the go-to person. Betty was, and still is, one of the most respected Americans within our community. And in fact, Shiloh Community Development recently named one of our ten African-American trailblazers in Alaska, and she was one of them. And in February, she will be highlighted, highlighted in a series of vignettes that will air on television throughout this state. Betty gave all she had for this community and the state. And many people, organizations, individuals, agencies benefited from her work. I know Betty felt we needed to do more to balance out this state. As it related to public office, she was constantly trying to improve the diversity within the legislature, within the school board. She just worked to increase diversity wherever she went. You know, and people would ask, you know, "Betty, when are you gonna stop? When are you gonna stop? When are you gonna stop?" And she just couldn't. I mean, she just kept right on going, because that's who she was. I mean, she is a champion, and she championed that race. It saddens my heart, she worked until she couldn't work anymore, giving all she had and then some. I understand Saturday, the Anchorage School Board missed an opportunity. I, you know, I grew up in Anchorage, Alaska, and I'm just gonna share this, and then I'm gonna ask Pastor May to come. But as a student, an African-American student, who went through school without seeing any teachers that looked like me growing up, that left a void. It wasn't until I was in college at the university that I saw my first African-American instructor. And what that did for me was life-changing. And I just, I really feel that an opportunity was missed, and I'm just gonna leave it there. So I thank you, President Starr Marsette, as well as Alicia Hilda, for your steadfast confidence in our children, and, you know, I just hope and pray that one day, our kids will be able to come, no matter what they look like, and see people that look like them serving, so that they can say, "That's gonna be me one day." Thank you very much. Pastor May?
Pastor, Pastor May? It might be best, so we don't get the feedback, to use this mic. I think using the handheld with that, so that there won't be any feedback on there.
Would it be a problem if I just stood here and, and turned around and did whatever, and all of that good stuff? All righty. Thank you, Celeste. And let me say this, to the, to the school board and to Superintendent Dr. Bishop, and to all of the clergy represented here on today, and each of you assembled in, in this great gathering on tonight, in honor of former Senator and now former school board member Betty Davis. Thank God for each of you who are present. But let's give the Clark Informers and the band another big hand for sharing by way of that, by way of that resolution. I'm Pastor Leon D. May the First of Rivin the Desert Community Church. I'm here tonight, representing the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance of Anchorage and Vicinity, as well as the Martin Luther King Junior Foundation of Alaska. And it is a signal honor for me tonight, to have an opportunity to share on behalf of Lady Betty Davis on tonight. And Betty Davis served well wherever she served, and as we noted by screen and otherwise, that she's served at least three times on the Anchorage School Board, and served in the legislature. Let it just suffice for me to say this, that the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance in 2015 honored former Senator Davis as a living legend. And, yeah. And, and she's all of that in a bag of chips. She's all of that in a bag of chips. And let me say, let me say, let me say, let me say, that Betty, and giving her a tribute, and I'm delighted to have this opportunity and this privilege, but in giving her a tribute on tonight, Betty, Betty Davis served well over time. She withstood the test of time and longevity by virtue, as you can see, all of the years of her, of her service. But not only time, but she withstood the test of commitment. She was committed to all of her constituency in every area that she, that she's ever served in. Matter of fact, Betty Davis... Matter of fact, Betty Davis was the host and leader, and the first, as I knew of it, of an African-American summit in the, in the city and even the state of Alaska. She, she had a commitment to her constituency, but also to those, again, who looked like her. And we appreciate that about her. She was not one to leave anybody behind. She withstood the test of time. She withstood the test of commitment, but she also withstood the test of integrity. Betty Davis had magnanimous integrity to the degree, you might not have always agreed with her, you might not always have liked her, but she had integrity. She said what she meant, and she meant what she said. And even as I looked at that, that, that earlier picture, and even that one, and looked at it for just a moment, it was almost as if Betty was staring directly at you. She has a way of looking right through you and directly at you. She didn't talk around you, she talked to you. Betty was not a babbler. You always knew where she stood. She didn't talk around issues, she addressed issues. And we honor her tonight, we appreciate her tonight, and we're grateful and thankful for her many years of service across a broad spectrum in our society. And if I could, if I could digress momentarily, I too would like to put on my Martin Luther King Jr. hat tonight and stand in his spirit for a moment. And I too feel as though that we, we missed a great opportunity as it relates to FaceTiming with our community, as it relates to diversity. Betty was of a darker hue, and when we look around, we see lighter hues all across the board. Hello, you know, and, but if, 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 and I don't mean to overstate that because somebody's been installed on tonight, and we don't want to minimize that at all. And so I want to be as gracious as possible in saying, I do, I too believe that we missed a great opportunity to say to our community at large, as a board, that we embrace diversity to a degree that we would elevate someone who didn't look like everybody else. And I don't want to, like I said, minimize one who is being elevated to a seat because that is, that is big, that is important, and that's not my intent. But I do want to recognize, in the spirit of Martin Luther King Jr., he would probably say tonight, "We deserve a seat at the table." God bless you and keep you, is my prayer.
It's me. Good evening. My name is Rezine Jackson, and I'm a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Xi Phi Omega Chapter here in Anchorage, Alaska, where Margot Bellamy is our president. It is an honor and a pleasure that the chapter asked me to acknowledge Mrs. Davis, something that is well-deserved. Mrs. Davis has volunteered her service with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. She has worked with us for 35 years. She has helped us with fundraisers, community activities, and scholarships, so our young seniors can go to college. Every time we call on Mrs. Davis, her answer was yes. Mrs. Davis is also very personal to me. Mrs. Davis was one of the first people I met when I first moved to Alaska back in '83. Within 24 hours after getting here and getting married, she gave me my wedding reception. Someone who didn't know me gave me a wedding reception. And that's the type of person she was. She would help anyone and everyone. She helped all boys and girls, men and women in the community. Mrs. Davis also did a lot of personal things. We, we had dinners together, and when we called on her, she was always there. So she was like a mom to me. And one of the favorite things, she's a nana. Her grandchildren call her nana, and my child call her nana. So Mrs. Davis is very personal. I've seen her from when she was a social worker, from school board, and to now. So she always cooked dinners for us, and it gives me pleasure to cook dinner for her. So I would like to present to Tony to give to Mrs. Davis from Xi Phi Omega Chapter. Would you please let Mrs. Davis know that we, that we, the Sisters of Xi Phi Omega Chapter of Anchorage, Alaska, is there for her? Anytime she needs us, we will also say to Mrs. Davis, yes, as she has done so much in our community and for our children. And in, um, one thing I didn't tell you, that Tony's like a brother to me, and his sister Sonia, who is not here, is like a sister to me. So, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Anchorage School Board, members of the Anchorage community. My name is Kevin McGee, I'm President of the Anchorage NAACP. I am humbled here today to convey the Anchorage NAACP's gratitude to Betty Davis for a lifetime of service. Betty Davis has served our community so long in elected office that many people forget she worked an entire career as a social worker. Her list of accomplishments is incredible. She served as a member of the Anchorage School Board from 1982 to 1990, 1998 to 1999, and again until just a few weeks ago. She served as State Representative from 1990 to 1996, and as a State Senator from 2000 until 2012. Although her list of accomplishments are too long to list here, I do want to note her pivotal role in the Senate Bipartisan Working Group that established fair oil taxes, saving tens of billions of dollars that not only funded key public services, but also protected our state during the recession from which we're only beginning to emerge. Miss Davis also served as Chair of the State Board of Education. Her service was not limited to legislative work. She also worked on the Alaska Black Leadership Conference, Church Women United, Common Ground, the Anchorage NAACP, the League of Women Voters, and Delta Sigma Theta. Betty Davis has not only left an indelible mark on our community and generations of kids, of working families, we can also thank her for helping create a community with an opportunity for all. Thank you.
Good evening. Everyone, I'm Mrs. Rosa Foster. Been an Alaska resident since 1961. So happy to be here tonight, though, to talk about Ms. Betty Davis, my friend, the Betty that I know. I have known Mrs. Davis for over 40 years. We are friends, we still are friends. Today, we are friends. Tonight, we are friends. But I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Alaska Alumni Chapter, on which Betty became a member over 40 years ago. For the 40 years that Betty became a Delta, she was a true Delta. Delta has initiatives that we embarked, we embarked every year ever since we've been in existence. And I'm just going to name a few. The Five Point Programmatic Thrust, such as Economic Development, Educational Development, International Awareness and Development, Physical and Mental Health and Development, Political Awareness and Involvement. We believe that Betty really enjoyed the Political Awareness and Involvement Initiative. As you can see, and as you have heard, it's been the political. But not only has it been political, it's been perseverance. If you know Betty, you know she was persistent also. Whatever you ask Betty to do, Sora Betty, I'm going to use this this time. She's my Delta, so I'm talking about my Sora. So whatever a Sora was asked to do, she was always there to do it, or she was trying to do it, or she was going to get someone to do it, to help you, as was been said. She was delegated, everything. She was absolutely wonderful. My friend, I stand here now, and I'm feeling something because I love Betty. And I remember when she was a legislator in Juneau. She called me one time, and she said, "Rosa, meet me in Jamaica." Well, Rosa met her in Jamaica. She said, another year, she said, "Rosa, meet me in Maui." I met her in Hawaii. "Rosa, meet me in Miami." I met her in Miami. Betty, we are friends, I love her, but I want to move on a little bit also, Delta, because I have to put all this together. We can't separate the sorority from the person. The sorority as person, we are. Betty, you know, when she was elected to the school board, I remember being at the office there, working, and also recruiting other people to serve also. And Betty was that kind of person. If she had an office, you wanted to be there because good things were going on in there. She was there trying to get others to work and to serve. That was her mission. Service was her mission. Betty did such things as securing scholarships and education grants for local youths. She donated books and school supplies to the schools. She also enjoyed and continued her mission in advocating for the youth and education wherever possible. Whenever you saw Betty's campaign poster, you always saw kids in there, didn't you? Always kids from the beginning on up to the adults. She was a true advocate for the youth and for education. Because of her love for public service, she moved on to broader horizons, such as the Alaska School Board of Education. I'm sorry, the Alaska Department of Education. I know because she invited me down to Juneau. So I've been there. She always included Rosa and others when she was having whatever was going on down in Juneau. And I too liked the political, too. Also, Betty, from the State Board of Education, she moved on to be elected to the House of Representatives, to the Alaska State Senate, and then back to the school board in 2013. And so because Betty was such an advocate, you could not say no to Mrs. Davis. She was that kind of person, but she loved people. And because of that, I'm going to say there are a couple of ways that, words that I'm going to use to describe her. She loved people, she loved politics, and I need to hurry up. And I need to go on. I need to sit down. But again, I'm here because I want us to remember my friend, my Sora, our wonderful legislator, everything that Betty did, we just love her. And I just want you guys to keep her in your heart and keep her in your prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosa. So we're going to have two more speakers, Mr. Nate Rivers, and then also, we have, we're going to hear from Senator Davis's son, Tony.
Members of the school board, visiting friends, my name is Nathaniel Rivers. I am the President of the Local Chapter of Omega Psi Phi, Chapter of Gamma Alpha here. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to have me say something in behalf of Ms. Betty Davis. I have to kind of reach back, and I promise I won't be too long. But I have to reach back because, you notice, you saw all the ladies come up, but some of the small things that people probably don't even realize, you know, how far Ms. Davis arms sort of reach out. And I think it has a lot to do with her roots as a member, a graduating member of an HBC. And that stands for HBC, Historical Black Colleges. But we, the members of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, we spend a lot of our time mentoring little boys here in the community. In fact, we are a partner with one of the school district schools, Clark Middle School, who are Ms. Cecily Williams. So generously give us a chance to be around her school a lot. But I kind of like wanted to share this with the family and everybody else. And when we started our program, like any other programs with kids, you know, you need a lot of help. And we went to Ms. Davis, you know, explained to her what our concept was and what we were trying to do for little, young boys in the middle school. And she stuck her arm out, I mean, as wide as could be, saying, Nate, hey, you know, whoever, anything you guys need, let me know. And again, this is important because, again, we're talking about young, middle school boys. If you know how the community is, there's a lot of troubles and things boys can get in trouble doing. And again, Ms. Davis, you know, you know, stuck her arm out and said, hey, I'm here, tell us what you want to do, what you want me to help you with. And again, we are very thankful and grateful for her for always giving that opportunity to say, here I am, use me any way I can. And again, my mom always tells me, you know, always honor me before I die. And again, this is great because we're saying, "Thank you, Betty," when she's still here versus saying, "Thank you" afterwards. So, to the family. So, well, we'll be coming over, we'll be coming over to the house. So you see all those guys show up in the purple jacket, it'll be us. So we will personally make a trip over and make sure Betty sees us. And again, thank you, members of the school board, for allowing me this chance to speak.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, to members of the past and present school board and past and present superintendents, I really do appreciate this. And on behalf of my sister, and as you can see, I'm the crybaby of the family. So on behalf of me, my sister, my late father, I appreciate all of you that have come out for this event tonight. When my mother first came home way back when and said that she was going to run for the school board, my immediate reaction was, oh, Lord, they don't know what they're getting into. My mother is one that is, like someone said, she doesn't talk around you, she talks to you. She's not shy about a fight. She will let you know what's on your mind, on her mind, even if you don't want to know what's on her mind. She has been a fair person. Education has always been a big deal with her, even going back into, I remember when I was in fourth grade, she started being active with the PTA to the point that getting to know the principals and the stu, or the teachers in, in the school that we were going to, and we were going to Mount Spur Elementary. She, she knew these teachers by first name. And personally, I couldn't get away with anything that she would find out. And coming from a small town in Louisiana that was segregated at that time, when my father went to Vietnam, we moved to Louisiana, and that's where she finished her degree. when my father went to Vietnam, um, we moved to Louisiana and that's where she finished her degree in, uh, at Grambling. But when I got there, this was the first place that I lived in that was segregated. I, I didn't know anything about, I mean, I just thought black and white, just because my father was in the air force, that was just the way it was, black and white, no big deal. But that one year that we was there, and after about a month, you know, I told my mom, I said, I want to leave here. I don't like this place. And even back then, she says, well, we're not gonna leave, I'm gonna get my degree. And, um, you just have to deal with it, but you have to deal with people that are not like you on an even keel that you are. Everything is, everybody's gonna be the same. All you need to do is get your education, do what the teacher says, because you know, if you don't, I will be down there. Uh, now, the last thing that I want to say, and they're not here, but the, and this goes for kids anywhere. And your parents, you know, let this be known to your children, is that particularly women, and particularly African-American women, my mom and I have had this conversation, that she wants to, wants to let you know that you need to keep striving for your children. Don't let her legacy go to waste. There has to be some women coming up in this world. They need to study, they need to do whatever they do, volunteer. Um, volunteering is a noble thing. It is a very noble thing for people to do. And, um, again, I appreciate everybody that did come, that has come out. Um, uh, she is, uh, she's in good spirits. I know she would have loved this, to be here, to see this. Um, and hopefully we'll get it on video so that she can, can see this. And I appreciate and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, thank you, thank you again for being here. I really want to say thank you, President Star Marcef and school board members, for allowing us to pay tribute to Senator Betty Davis, our icon. And then, if we can, all of those that are supporting Senator Davis, make sure you sign the collage. And then, as we exit out, I'd like to get a group picture so that we can show her. So if you can just take a few minutes to come out, go out the, the room here, so they can continue, on the stairs, so that you can, so they can continue your meeting. Um, we just want to say again, thank you very much, so, and thank you all.
I, I just, I just want to say too that, um, you know, regardless of color or where you come from or your culture, we can all strive to be more like Betty. Okay, we're ready. Okay. Okay. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and have our swearing in of our new board member.
You did wonderfully, wonderfully, awesome.
Thank you so much, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much. Please give Betty my best. Thank you.
I'd love to talk to you again.
How you doing?
Good, good.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. So, um, we are having the swearing in of a board member, new board member.
I would hit this gavel.
Okay.
Just say, at this time, we're gonna swear.
At this time, um, if I could have everyone either exit or just...
Is that on enough, or?
I know.
Try the one next to you, I wonder.
At this...
Nope.
This one? At this... No, no. Oh, this is, this is a little louder. Okay, at this time, okay. At this time, we're gonna have the swearing in of our, uh, new board member. So if I could have all those seated or just try to be a little quieter and respectful, I'd appreciate it. No, because we'll never get everybody back and we got somebody's presenting. Sorry, Mark. Okay. Okay. All right. Let's, let's go ahead with the swearing in then, okay. Okay, thank you. Well, usually we have a mic. Okay, if we are getting ready to have the swearing in of our new school board member, so, um, I just appreciate the noise level coming down just a little bit, or maybe a lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Foster, please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mark Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And that I will honestly and faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially discharge.
My duties as school board member.
My duties as school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, and welcome. As my husband always says, be careful what you wish for. Okay, at this time, we're going to, uh, I, I do want to make just a quick announcement that we are gonna move things from the non-agenda items and post them on the non-agenda items next school board meeting, in case anyone is waiting around for this. And it's gonna be the ASD Memorandum 024, Sixth Year Capital Improvement Plan, ASD Memorandum 046, Approval of the April Bond Proposal, and also ASD Memorandum 047, the Discussion of Mount Spur Elementary School Closure. And the reason we're doing that is because we have forty-three individuals signed up to testify, and we have three, two board members and superintendent that are catching flights tonight at twelve-thirty, and it's gonna be a long evening. Yes? Okay, the, well, the, it, thank you. I, I appreciate that input. Unfortunately, it is what it is and, and I can't change and because, yeah. Okay, if Lions Quest would like to come up and present, I'd appreciate that.
Madam President, um, if I could, uh, we'll go ahead and get queued up. Uh, we have some guests that are, um, on a flight, international guests that are coming forward. So if you could come to the forward, we'll get the PowerPoint queued up. Yep, um, you can take a seat if you'd like, and, um, your, your presentation will be here, and I know that you're going to introduce others.
Can I hold this up like this?
Um, did you want to make a report to us or to everyone?
Uh, to everybody and you.
Okay, um, let's give you this then.
Okay. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, board members, and Dr. Bishop, thank you very much. We're with the Lions Clubs of Anchorage and the surrounding area. And the first thing I'd like to do is to introduce some of my friends that are with me. I'd like to introduce Ev Burke. Ev Burke is the treasurer of our Lions Quest program and, uh, facilitator of our grant. Lion Karen Burns is, used to be with the District Attorney's Office in the state of Alaska here, and she was the, um, author of our grant. And Lion Al Thompson is taking over. He actually is a ed, past educator from, um, Alaska and around the world. And he actually started the SAVE program here in Alaska. So, you know, he's very, um, very knowledgeable about the things that Lions do and, and what we can do for our communities. So I'd like to start off and, and just say a little bit about Lions Quest. Do you know what Lions Quest is? Lions Quest, next slide, please, is the social-emotional learning curriculum that we put together on a worldwide basis. And just a little earlier, we heard, um, talk about Betty Davis and getting kids involved in different cultures and so forth. And Lions Quest was developed for the rest of the world, not just Anchorage, Alaska. And it's done in thirty languages, and it's all about positive youth development. So we want to make sure that as Lions Club members, we're trying to contribute back to our communities the best that we can and grow citizens that, um, will be good caretakers for us down the road. You can see some of the things we put up here, I'm not gonna read everything there because you can, you can just, um, read it if you want. But the bottom line for us is that it's all about getting the students involved, the teachers involved, the, the, um, janitors involved, the bus drivers involved, and it's all about community-type service learning. And we've gone out of our way to try to put this together and, and make sure that we can bring it to the schools. And we're really happy that you all, you all have allowed us to do that. You know, the Lions have come together and we've actually raised almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to make this thing happen. So we aren't, we aren't using school district money to make this social-emotional learning program happen in the schools. We raised that money from other Lions and corporations around this town to make it happen. And I'll get a little bit more into that later. Can we go to the next slide, please? The next one after that. You know, there's almost sixteen million students around the world that have gone through this. And this is a, this is a slide that was, is up there right now, but that was two years ago. So we've almost doubled that now. We have about six hundred thousand educators that have been trained in this kind of program. And can you, just about at the, um, Anchorage School District, we have ten middle schools that are involved in this program now. In two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, we had Central, Clark, Goldenview, Gruning, Handschu and Mirs. And this year, we have Begich, Mirror Lake, Romick, and Wendler that are signing on. We've had three hundred and seventy-five students, or excuse me, teachers trained, and we have about six thousand eight hundred and fifty students that are going through this program. And you know, and when you go around and talk to the students as we do, we go around to the classrooms and we try to visit with the principals and in the classes, and we hear nothing but really good, positive feedback from everyone that we talk to. We're, we're actually looking at doing this program now in Bethel and in Fairbanks, North Starborough. So it's starting to take off and be a really good, a really good, um, project for Lions and good for the students and teachers in the school districts. And if you wonder how we're doing, you just have to ask the kids, because we go around and ask the kids all the time. We ask the parents and we ask the teachers. And everybody seems to think it's going very well. Granted, it's just the first year we've done this, but we have one more year to make it all work. We have an independent research company that is, um, doing research on this program right now, and we hope to have the results back in about, oh, four to six months or so. So we're really looking forward to seeing how that turns out. And are we, are we affecting people? Are we affecting the students? Are we affecting scores, classroom attendance? You know, what, what is really happening with this program? The Lions are extremely excited about it. So, you know, we couldn't have gotten this going without contributions from the Lions, contributions from somebody like Northrop Bank, who stepped up in a big way to help us make this happen, and other corporate sponsors that have come to the table as well. So I, I would like for all of you, if you know about Lions and you know about this SEL program, to acknowledge that some of the, some of these companies that have stepped up like this is very unusual for companies to step up and want to help with curriculum and studies rather than sports. So we're really excited about it. Next, please. Is that the la, that's not the last one. So before I go any further, I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Hermanson, a teacher, that's gonna talk a little bit about her experience. Just talk a little bit about your experience. In her classroom, and she just had the opportunity to go to Columbus, Ohio, and present with some other folks to Lions from around the country.
Well, I wasn't prepared for this, and I have the cold to prove it. But, um, I hope you can still hear me, I'll eat the mic because I speak very quietly. Um, Lions Quest, we just, I just got trained last year, and so last year was my first year involved in it. But I noticed significantly from the beginning that there was a difference with my students. Um, some of them felt like they were just a little bit more safe. Um, they felt like they can talk to their neighbors a little bit more. It's, the whole program is all about, how do you talk about things that are everyday kind of occurrences? When you have a conflict with somebody, and we have a lot of things that we try and do and try and teach our students about, how do you appropriately interact with one another? How do you think about things when you're still in this small world where your prefrontal cortex isn't quite developed yet? Um, in Lions Quest, it's just been a really great program in terms of giving students a voice, helping them to deal with each other. And, um, one of my favorite stories that I like to share about this is this one student who really found her voice and found a way to be a leader. Um, she was dealing with some things in her own life, very tumultuous. However, when she found, um, a way to talk to her classmates that was positive, she was able to draw out from them some of their experiences, some of their stories that I couldn't, which I thought was profound. And it all started from just talking to one another on a very personal basis. So I think one of the beauties of this program is not so much the scripted lessons, which are really nice, um, but also just the way in which it interacts and gets the kids to talk to one another, and it creates this safe community where students can be vulnerable, they can talk about things that they're dealing with, and they can really learn and grow together, which is where the learning really happens. So, um, I hope that is what you're looking for.
Thanks, you, thank you, Liz. What we'd like to do now is like leave you with a presentation that we put together here in Anchorage. And this has gone all over the world, and it's had over a hundred thousand hits already. So we're hoping that it gets more and more hits as it goes along, um, throughout the rest of the world. It's a testimonial about what's happening in the Anchorage School District. So if you could play that, that'd be awesome.
And Louis, as we queued that up, it was my job to introduce you as Louis Quinn from Lions Quest. And he's a longtime Alaskan business owner and past International Director of Lions Club International, serving as a worldwide chairperson for marketing and community iTunes, as well as seated on the Youth, Family, and Women's Committee, and instrumental in suggesting Lions Quest to ASD. So I wanted to properly introduce you as well, because you introduced everyone else, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, if you could play that video, that would be awesome.
Being able to deal with one another, even a little thing like a bump in the hallway sometimes just leads to an aggressive moment, because not every kid knows how to handle that. So Lions Quest is a really great program where we can kind of talk about different experiences or different students or situations that's not them specifically, and be able to imagine what could you do differently and talk about ideas.
To engage kids in learning, social-emotional learning, and that's the, I guess, the buzzword for... And that's, I guess, the buzzword for academics, but it's the things that we really want kids to know in life.
It starts to build that social awareness of other people and how to deal with things that arise when you're working with other people. And as we read, we're going to look and see how some things happened to Jimmy and how that affects his day-to-day emotions.
We have over 100 schools with all of our students, close to 49,000. Anchorage, of it in itself, as well as the school district, is quite diverse.
And so if we can touch the lives of all those different cultures and so forth and be effective at it, then it could be a model program for other folks around the country. So we thought, well, perhaps we could get some corporate sponsors to come in and help us find a new way.
The focus of Lions Quest is to teach young people the value of relationships, becoming more self-aware, more socially aware. That's a great way to form a stronger foundation in the community. And we saw this as an opportunity to get involved in a program that would do a lot of good.
So it's a curriculum that you can be more flexible based on what you're noticing that your students need, which is an incredible strength.
A class that likes art, it can be art-based. If you have one that likes math, it can be math-based.
And so I'm starting to see a little bit more community building. But I do notice that the students are a little bit more capable of being able to talk to each other.
The base used to be the three Rs, right? Reading, writing, arithmetic. It's not that way anymore. Our students need to have a lot more tools in their toolbox to be able to be successful in our world.
This is something that carries into every aspect of our students' lives.
You know, that's just one of the things that Lions Clubs do in your town and in your state. There's so many things that we're involved in, and youth is always at the top of our list. So thank you very much for supporting us and supporting Lions.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, let me see if this, is this working? Can you guys hear me? Raise your hands. Okay, good. I don't have to use that. We're going to move forward with public testimony. And we have 43 individuals signed up to speak. If everyone were to speak three minutes, we would be here over two hours. So at this time, we are going to limit the testimony to two minutes. I realize that the program with Ms. Davis kind of went over a little bit, but I think all of us are in agreement that, you know, we wanted to show our respect to Ms. Davis. So we are going to do that. I'm going to read the opening statement. I would also let you know that we have two board members and the superintendent that have flights this evening. We're leaving out at 12:30. So we may actually have to leave before the board meeting is over, which Ms. Hildy, as the clerk, will take over. That's one of the reasons why we've moved some of the things off of the non-agenda items to carry them over to next school board meeting, because I'd like all of our board members to be here when we discuss this before it goes to vote. So the board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when we call your name. At this time, you'll have two minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the time appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all who would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others who would like to testify with opposing opinions. Actually, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. And before I call anyone up, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Bishop for a moment.
Thank you, Madam President. I had been asked to address a video that was on YouTube. And Mr. Hess, our Chief Human Resource Officer, would you mind sharing a few comments about that?
Yes, ma'am. At the beginning of October, in a general leadership meeting where we had our district leadership, I was reviewing an article from the Oregon School Boards Association related to the collective bargaining and some of the things that have occurred in school districts in different parts of the country. Part of this was out of, in response to questions from administrators about what they should do and how they should do, how they should do things. In those comments, I was reviewing several tactics that had been employed by unions around the country and making comments about, to the administrators, that this too is an issue that will be resolved and that they'll be able to move forward. I encourage them to support their teachers, continue to mentor their teachers, and continue to work with them and share facts whenever they were asked questions. I did use the term manufactured crisis, and that was a reference specific to unions and some of the strategies that they employ in a collective bargaining process when they attempt to communicate with members of the community, parents, and the school board.
Does the board have any questions or any comments? Okay. I'm going to call Jennifer, I'm sorry, Jacqueline Morris and Kimberly... Santagata? Did I say that right? Okay, good. And if you'll just have a seat there? Yes.
Since they pushed the Mount Spur thing, they're not talking about it, does that mean the votes can be pushed two weeks as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need.
Yes. As soon as Katie's ready, you'll see the clock over here, and you can begin. Jacqueline? Just hold on one second. And thank you, everyone. I really appreciate you working with us this evening. I know that you've probably gotten your, we'll start the timer again, and that you've gotten your speeches down to a testimony to three minutes. And it's just difficult. It's going to be a long evening anyway. I do want to hear everyone who has signed up to speak, and so does the rest of the board. But I do appreciate you working with us on this. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Konakaken, how are you? I'm Agugak. That's, I'm a Nupiat named after my great-grandmother from Shishmaraf. My English name is Jacqueline Morris. I'm indigenous. My family's lived on this land for thousands of years. And I'm here asking, begging you guys to make a policy allowing Alaskan Native and American Indians to wear regalia to their high school graduations. Last spring, my son graduated from Service High School. And fortunately, just by misunderstandings, he was allowed to wear the sealskin cap. And the sealskin sash with his graduating class and his mukwux. And to see my son walk across the stage to get his high school diploma wearing part of our cultural regalia, I cannot explain what that meant to me and what I know it means to my grandparents and parents who are, who have passed. And I know they're looking down and they're, you know, they have pride in knowing that we're carrying our culture while we walk into our future. So I didn't realize that I'd only have two minutes. So I'm going to read as much as this can, oh, I guess my time's up. But please make a policy. This shouldn't even be an issue. We're, there's three other states that have passed a law, and I'm hoping that you guys will be the, you know, leaders in this for Alaska. That what you do here in making a, making a policy will be carried over to the rest of the state. And then a law will be passed, and we'll be the fourth state allowing our regalia to high school graduations. Queana, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you can email any other comments you have to board members, just go out there and email it to the school board, and we'll be happy to read that. The next name I want to call up is Erin Sullivan.
Oh, wait.
Yeah. I just need to call up the next person, sorry. And Kimberly, when you see the clock, you can begin.
Hello, I am Kimberly Santagata. I'm a second grade teacher and a mother of four girls and a wife. I'm also half a Nupiat. My native name is Kozua. My girls are fourth Nupiat. I started back in college because I worked at what is now Cook Inlet Native Head Start. I had some support from my high school teachers to go to college, but most of my life told me that I wasn't smart enough. When I went back to college, I was able to take a course about culturally responsive teaching. Mind you, my older girls were in Head Start at the time, and they're now in secondary school at Polaris K-12 School. I learned then that Alaskan natives, American Indian students have the lowest graduation rate of any student in the district. I also learned in that class that most students drop out subconsciously, make that decision before they get to the end of seventh grade. There has been so much degradation in the treatment of indigenous people in the history of our state and country. Generational trauma has been inflicted, inflicted on top of actively trying to deny our cultures. Our students have to learn to respect our traditional values as well as respect to Western values, especially when the two clash. We tell them to stand proudly, yet many see us as damned drunken natives. In education, especially, this happens. The cultural disparities are overlooked. You expect a bilingual student to need more time to process, yet many don't give this thought to our Alaskan Native students who have the cultural response for our home culture that expects a youth to be, to observe and be wise in their choice of words. Yet being too quiet and meek is also frowned upon in Western societies. The ability to wear cultural regalia, indigenous or not, gives students a sense of pride in the accomplishment of graduating that can be seen outwardly in a tangible way. It gives younger students an attainable goal to work for and be proud of. Equity isn't always being fair. Equity is leveling the skills.
Thank you so much. So Erin Sullivan, and then Lorraine?
Lauren.
Ordorato? Okay. And Erin, whenever you see the clock, you can begin.
Hello, I would like to thank the school board for this opportunity to address you. My name is Erin Sullivan, and I'm a teacher at Chugiak High School. I have testified before, but I felt compelled to return to express my frustration with the district. In the brief now two minutes that I have, I would like to present to you the facts on what it means to be a professional. And that's what we are as educators, professionals. And rather than directing you to a website, which the district administration is apt to do, as a professional, I will gladly speak to you face-to-face. Fact, over half of this district is made up of Tier III professionals. This means we do not have a retirement, nor do we currently have a fair contract. Yet, as professionals who love educating students, we show up for work each day striving to implement the money-wasting programs they're creating cookie-cutter students who are recognized only as data, not individuals. How can I capture student number whatever's heart if he or she has lost heart and passion for education? It was my understanding that I was creating good citizens with the ability to think and solve and problem-solve, not robots. Fact, this district lacks respect for professional educators. This summer, I attended all but two open bargaining sessions, and I was appalled at the tone, disregard, and condescension from an individual whose job, according to your website, focuses on investing in staff. When you degrade professionals for their expert testimony and experiences, not manufactured crises, it exposes the lack of professionalism by the district administration. Why, Dr. Bishop, are you retaining individuals who openly claim that 3,000 professional educators are manufacturing crises and only speak with small seeds of truth and great amounts of exaggeration? Do you possess the same sentiments? You must, or you would have stepped in to correct the misinformation. Dr. Bishop and school board, how is this blatant disrespect for educators okay? I already said that half of this district's employees are Tier III. We ultimately have no reason to stay, and why would we? You say it's because of the money, but clearly it's not, since Tier III are staying and fighting hard to stay. Why fight so hard when we could easily walk away? It's clearly not for a retirement package. We do not have one. And it's not for a huge raid, since we've never had one. We fight because we love kids. We fight because we love our jobs. We fight because we believe every student deserves the best education possible. Since the district keeps stressing money, here's my last fact. Fact, as you continue to alien educators, diminish the value of academic freedom, and treat students as numbers, then these manufactured crises will become an actual crisis for you. You will lose veteran teachers who are tired of seeing his or her academic freedom demolished. You will lose innovative, young, dynamic teachers who infuse the classroom and the district with the passion needed to grow students.
I'm sorry.
In the end, without teachers to run your schools, district employees, yourself included, Dr. Bishop, you will lose your six-figure salary. Ultimately, you can't afford to loot us. So I implore you to open your eyes and treat us like the professionals we truly are.
So I'm going to reiterate again, if I've asked you that your time is up, I understand. I certainly do. It's not something I want to do, but at this time in our meeting, it is something we have to do. I want to be able to hear all the testimonies before I have to leave, and so do other board members. So please, if you can keep it to two minutes, we would appreciate that. Next up is Brian Mason, please.
Good evening, Anchorage School Board members and Anchorage community members. My name is Lauren Eduardo. I go to Diamond High School. I'm a junior this year. Today, I'll be talking about Diamond Service and East's new policy of no backpacks for students. I have three reasons to present today on why I oppose this policy. First off, backpacks protect students. Secondly, backpacks better educate students. And third, finally, backpacks are a fundamental right to students. Firstly, backpacks protect students. When I asked my teacher at Diamond about our no backpack policy, she voiced me her adamant concern about school safety and her fears of a student carrying a gun into her class. But we have to acknowledge that these fears exist with or without backpacks. A coat can just as easily conceal a firearm. Take, for example, Calibine, in which the shooter carried guns in their trench coats. There's better ways to resolve these fears. For example, Major Stoman Douglas High School instituted a clear backpack policy in April of 2018 following their deadly Valentine's Day massacre. In addition to that, backpacks protect students. Bulletproof inserts are available online and protect a student. However, if their backpack is locked away in their locker, there is no defense for that student. These inserts cost less than $100. Secondly, backpacks better educate students. Class time is limited. Passing time is limited. It's not feasible to use the restroom, get water for your next class, and go to your locker to gather the necessary supplies, and still be on time for your class in six minutes. Therefore, this leads to two outcomes. Firstly, the student is late to class, taking away from the beginning of a lecture. Secondly, the student is forced to get the necessary supplies, like, for example, flashcards or highlighters, or to use a restroom, sacrificing class time. Third and finally, backpacks ought to be considered an inalienable right to students. As a student at a public high school, I don't have many rights, but backpacks ought to be considered one. Backpacks are a sense of privacy, fulfillment, and organization for students. As a female, backpacks allow me to carry feminine supplies in order to be prepared for my period. In addition to that, backpacks give students a sense of belonging. It's something that reminds you of your home and that carries you throughout the school day. Lack of backpacks have increased theft at Diamond. For example, when you go in the bathroom, there's no place to keep your stuff in a stall. Therefore, you're forced to leave it outside of the stall and is subject to theft. Water bottles, calculators, and other supplies have already been stolen this year. Again, I urge you to consider the protection of students, the privacy of the students, and the individual expression of students with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Janessa Rivas? Did I say that right?
Before I begin my testimony, I would like to say, as a voter and as a parent of an Anchorage School District, of two Anchorage School District students, that I am extremely disappointed. I scheduled my testimony last week. I was responded to by board supporters, board testimony, or excuse me, board support personnel that I would have three minutes to speak. I cannot imagine how upset I would be. I cannot imagine how upset I would be as a parent if my children's teacher told me that our scheduled conference that we have this week, "Oh, I'm sorry, we have to shorten that time because, you know, things ran over early, so you get less time." I can't imagine how upset parents of my students would be if I told them, "I'm sorry, your, your son's presentation that he spent weeks preparing, he spent all this time, he doesn't get all that time." I'm just gonna, give me the summary, good enough, move on.
You know, I appreciate, and I understand that. And as a board member, I'm sorry, I have to...
I understand that. And there also should be a recognition of the reality that many of the people that plan to testify tonight plan to give one or two line testimonies. This is not a secret. So, they're not all gonna be three minutes long. And those of us that prepared three minutes' testimony should have been allocated that. I will abide by the two-minute rule there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So, my name is Brian Mason. Um, I am a science teacher and science department chair at Chugiak High School, but I'm primarily here to speak as a parent of two elementary students in Anchorage School District. Um, I had intended to spend a little bit of time talking about those teachers that truly inspired us, because each one of us has those teachers in our lives that really made a difference. And I was gonna ask you to think for a moment about what it was that those teachers did in your life that really mattered. And the point I was going to get to, but I'm gonna summarize this, is most likely for most of us, there is not a teacher that changed your life that did so because they followed a highly scripted curriculum with fidelity. As a high school science teacher, I am fortunate in that I am trusted as a professional to craft lessons and assessments that meet the needs of my students. I have an academic plan that guides my instruction as I should, but I am free to choose each day how to best teach those standards. I can use my own experience, creativity, and strength to make sure that my students are meeting the academic goals that we share across this district. Yet, this is not the case for many hundreds of elementary teachers in our district. Instead, this group of highly educated, highly motivated professionals has been asked to follow a script. Members of this board, to be frank, this is a travesty and a disservice to the children attending our schools, to include my sons. To be clear, there is value in having tested curriculum, in having many resources available to our teachers, but what we are doing is we are asking students to forego their own, or excuse me, teachers to forego their own strengths and creativity in said by asking them to follow this script. I apologize. I don't think I need to tell you that there is a significant morale crisis among ASD educators. Low morale and the current contract impasse is not just about money. In large part, it's about feeling values as professionals. Getting a periodic mass email from the administration about how much we're appreciated is about the same as getting a Valentine's card from your spouse and then being ignored the rest of the year. At a certain point, action, love, words of love without action are empty, just as words of appreciation are hollow when we are not trusted to do our jobs. Members of the board, our current morale crisis is not a manufactured crisis. It is very real, and it is in part because many teachers are not trusted to be the professionals that they are. The academic freedom language in this contract matter. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Thomas Pease come up, please? You can begin when you see the clock.
I'm sorry. Oh, I don't know. Can you restart it?
Oh, sorry, that's okay. We'll, we'll give you a few...
Okay. Yeah, and I just want, are you gonna restart it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Hold on.
I wanted to say quickly, too, that I'm going to skip my introduction as well, which is regrettable. Um, I will say that I am a classroom teacher and a mother of three. My husband is gone, so I stayed extra to be here. I will try to make this two minutes, but I didn't have the luxury to time it, since I didn't know it needed to be two minutes, but I'll try my best. Good evening. I am here today to share some of my honest and very real experiences as a teacher in the Anchorage School District. I apologize in advance that I am not here to share the moments of magic that I and others have as we work in positive partnerships with children and their families. I can imagine the school board feels weary hearing the opposite. I feel weary, too. Recently, I watched the video referenced earlier about, of an ASD employee speaking to what appeared to be a room full of ASD principals at a general leadership meeting. I was disappointed by the characterization of teacher concerns, and frankly, the response, and especially the assertion that teacher reports of intimidation by principals have been quote "manufactured" by the Anchorage Education Association. I am one of many voiced to say unequivocally, "That is untrue." I feel hurt, angered, and saddened that an issue as serious as intimidation and harassment in the workplace would be dismissed as manufactured and delivered to those in a position of power over those who have expressed concerns. I hope that as a district, we would seek to build connections with each other, to understand and support each other, not dismiss or deny each other's truths. I am not here to disparage anyone's character. We are human beings, and as an educator, I believe mistakes are a learning opportunity. However, I believe the district has missed chances to grow stronger, as referenced earlier tonight as well. And after hearing legitimate teacher concerns presented as quote "tactics", I worry that another opportunity to improve and do better by each other will be missed as well. Briefly, I would like to share with the board that during the 2013, 2014 school year, I began documenting behavior and interactions with my school administrator that caused me to feel mistreated and intimidated. An AEA representative met with an ASD human resources employee on my behalf after I shared my concerns. Following the meeting, my AEA representative reported that ASD acknowledged my administrator was quote "rough around the edges", but they would help me to transfer. I did not feel relief knowing I would escape a hostile work environment where one, where physical posturing and yelling occurred. Instead, I felt disbelief and disgust. How was my transfer solution to the problem? I felt this inaction empowered my administrator, including a time when they told me during an evaluation conference that they could quote "handle a box of grievances, no problem, any day." Fortunately for me, fortunately for me, I was able to transfer to a different school where I never felt mistreated or intimidated. Unfortunately, I left colleagues that still faced the same person and the same behaviors. Many have since transferred themselves. Although this was almost five years ago, I hope the board and the district is listening. I hope you are reaching out to teachers in their buildings. I hope you are watching in the spring, um, schools that have large numbers of transfers. And I hope you believe that when teachers share concerns, there is truth there, not tactics.
Thank you. Marnie Hartill. Tell... Thank you, Marnie.
Hi, my name is Thomas Pease. I teach at Mears Junior High School. Uh, my comments will address the leadership tape from ten, ten days ago and how the Anchorage School Board should proceed as a result of that tape. Some salient points from the tape follow. Point number one, the leadership video shows our HR director implying that educators are calling in sick at the last minute, so vacancies go unfilled. Well, Mr. Hess, I don't miss work. I haven't taken a sick day in at least four years. But I know that when I do get sick, I seldom have control over the timing. What does ASD gain by alienating loyal employees? Point number two, the video shows about sixteen minutes from the end, our HR director instructing principals on how to respond to teachers who question whether they are contractually obligated to perform certain duties. Mr. Hess's advice? Demand to know where in the contract it says a principal can't mandate it. I can't think of a more confrontational piece of advice, and this coming from our HR director. And I commend Mike Graham for stepping in at this point during the principals' meeting and telling principals that Mr. Hess's tactic would be ill-advised. Point number three, in the video, we see our HR director stating that everyone wants more money. Ironically, just about everyone in that room received more money in the form of pay raises. Mr. Hess himself received a hefty raise two summers ago. It's those of us not in the video who haven't received a meaningful raise. Point number four, the video shows our superintendent telling principals that teachers who testify before this board give, and I quote directly, snippets of how they want to tell a story to make a good story. And I'll translate that for you. Our superintendent is telling principals that teachers are fabricating problems, or as Mr. Hess famously said, quote "manufacturing crises." And yet, our superintendent, in the very next breath, selectively chooses snippets of investigations she conducted that revealed there are no problems in the district. It makes a good story. In the video, our superintendent uses the term cray cray to describe testimony educators give at school board meetings. This comment is unprofessional and inaccurate. This board can and should take action. How this board wishes to address our superintendent's disappointing conduct is up to you.
I'm sorry.
But I recommend that Mr. Hess be removed from any responsibilities related to contract negotiations.
Point of order, um, it is in board policy that you cannot speak derogatory of any person, so you...
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Russ Kraft, if you would, come up next, please.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the board for hearing my testimony. My first, I want to express my sincere gratitude to Betty Davis for her years of service to our community, to our state, her leadership to the ASD school board for many years. We think, we thank you, Betty. Second, I must say that last Monday night, I watched the full video of a recent ASD general leadership meeting, and I was appalled by what I heard and saw. My name is Marnie Hartill. You know, you've heard from me. I have a Bachelor's of Arts in English Education, a five-through-12 teaching certificate in English Language Arts, Theater and Social Studies, a Master's of Arts cum laude in English Literature. I participated in seminar at University of York in the United Kingdom, completed archival thesis research at the British Museum, and at Oxford University Baudelaire Library. I have been an educator for over fifteen years in grades six through twelve. I have taught in Anchorage School District nine years. I am a Google Level Two Certified Educator, and I've served three years as a full-time certified faculty, high school technology collaborator. I have served ASD as a reading interventionalist, writing specialist, world literature teacher, technology elective teacher, and an acting teacher. I need the board to understand just one important thing. My testimony and my experience as a professional educator are real, not fabricated. My first testimony to you in the fall of 2015 about technology funding, my later testimony to you in 2017 about ASD's policies to recruit diverse staff and underrepresented minorities, my further testimony last spring of 2018 about nepotism and retribution, my testimony to you last month about the junior high school schedule, about the loss of instructional time, about the loss of collaborative time, about my status as a Tier III educator, and my inability to buy a home. These are not part of a manufactured crisis. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Marnie. Arthur Sosa?
Board members, I am here as a parent, and, uh, I am here as a parent of a current student as well as two former students at Eagle Academy Charter School. I'm a former academic policy board, and my involvement in the school spans over nine years. In that time, my wife and I have become a couple that other parents have come to for advice and to express concerns related to Eagle Academy. I'm here tonight to ask you to take into consideration some issues before approving the charter renewal on this school. These concerns are not mine, and they have, are not mine alone, and they have been brought forth to ASD staff in the past to try to resolve them. Eagle Academy has lost focus on its main reason for existence, and that is the teaching of students. Over the last five years, it has become more focused on staff comforts rather than students. Because of this lack of focus, the environment has become toxic for students, some staff, and parents. The current environment has caused, is caused by, or has resulted in the following: a total and complete, complete lack of confidentiality, where there, whether it is a concern with a teacher or even HIPAA information, retaliation against students when complaints are brought forth, an environment lacking trust resulting in anonymous complaints out of fear of retribution, attempts to silence complaints, bullying by administrators and staff on other staff members in full view of parents, calling out and shaming staff in front of other staff and students, violation of school policies regarding APB seats, nepotism, mismanagement of funds resulting in poor quality textbooks, allowing teachers to call out and chastise students, even those falsely accused without any consequences. How has the school gotten to this point? I believe it comes down to the leadership and the APB and the principal. When we brought forth our concerns to the principal, the result was deflection, excuses, and dismissal. When pressed, Ms. Logan's favorite line seems to be, "Well, how may I help you?" So, I'm gonna offer some, some constructive criticism. Do your job as an administrator. Put your students first. The school is only there for the students. You need to take, you need to take a backseat. Operate the school with the utmost integrity. This includes even eliminating the appearance of impropriety. Operate at a level of confidentiality and don't violate confidentiality or hide behind it. Remember, your actions are in full view of others. Do not publicly chastise your staff. There are always two sides to a story.
Thank you, sir. Uh, before you start. So, um, this is something we've kind of let go on, and, and I want to read the policy, because I don't want you guys to think I'm making this up. But it does say, um... Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the school board. The school board president may... The school board president, uh, may limit the total time for each agenda item, modify the length of testimony and/or the ordering of speakers. It also says, "No oral presentations shall include charges or complaints against any employee of the school district, including the superintendent, regardless of whether or not the employee is identified by name or another reference, which tends to identify. Charges of complaints against employees must be submitted to the school board under provision of school board policy and administrative regulations related to such complaints." So, at this time, I'd like to call up, uh, um, Petra Willem. Is, am I saying that right? I'm sorry if I'm not. And, um, Mr. Sosa, you can begin when you see the clock.
Okay. All right. Uh, Madam Chair, Superintendent Bishop, and school board members, uh, my name is Arthur Sosa. I'm the principal at Abbott Loop Elementary School. And I also have Abbott Loop parents here in the audience. Uh, I come before this board to share with you my plan for Abbott Loop Elementary. As you know, we were talking about Abbott Loop being a replacement school. With your support and the support of the community, I'll be able to do the following things. I'll be able to provide my underserved students an opportunity to have, take part of a innovative state-of-the-art school that is embedded with the concept of blended school, model school. Uh, it would offer the South Side an opportunity to have, uh, support, uh, also with another innovative school, especially with the concept of the new K-8 school, a new option on the South Side of town. Uh, K-8 schools are becoming increasingly popular in the United States for many reasons. The biggest reason being that schools have to make fewer, or sorry, students need to make fewer transitions, thus providing students with less stress of getting to know a new structure like middle school for sixth graders making the transition, i.e. reducing the stress of having to learn a new, completely different, uh, s- uh, structure for that elementary school, from that of elementary school. More time and energy can be focused on student learning and less stress learning the new idiosyncratic nuances, nuances of a new learning environment. Uh, Western demographics support the need of having an Abbott Loop school due to an increase in multifamily housing booming in the neighborhood. Uh, currently, Abbott Loop has 520 students in our attendance zone, 160 or 32% of which are going to immersion programs or other innovative, uh, programs, uh, leaving our school. So, I'm hoping to recapture, uh, the number of students that are leaving back to Abbott Loop. And by building a new school and having an innovative program, we're, we're hoping to accomplish that. Uh, like Dr. Bishop said earlier, if you build it, they will come. So, I'm very optimistic that that will take place. There are many types of blended school models out there. Uh, one parent and I were discussing the rotation model, which encourages, encourages students to, um, to be able to learn and at their particular level, and also allows students who may be having learning disabilities to also be included in the least restrictive environment. So, thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Natalie Foley, if you could come up, please? Natalie Foley, if you could come up, please.
Hi, my name is Petra Willem, and I'm hungry. I'm here to, I'm a parent of two children at Inlet View Elementary School, and I'm here to highlight the reasons why our facility is ready for some community investment. Let me just hit the highlights in case I run out of time. Old, unsafe, crammed full, and rodents. I'm also an architect, when I can fit that in. I just wanted to go over a couple of highlights from that six-year capital improvement plan, because there's some information there that's old. Number one, things that I did pull out of there that are true. Inlet View is the oldest school maintained by ASD. It was built in 1957, and it's never had a major renewal. It's also the smallest school that ASD takes care of at 32,470 square feet. It has the highest program capacity percentage, which is a measurement of the use of the rooms. So in 2017, it was at 142, which was the most capacity use of rooms of any school. And now, we actually have 254 students. We're supposed to have room for 170, so we're actually at 167% program capacity. We literally have negative wasted space in our school. The downtown population, can you hear me, is expected to increase, and so the need is not likely to go down. Investment in our school will be money well spent. Also, I did hear mentioned that we have 150 kids that are not zoned for our school, and that is no longer true and hasn't been for a few years. We have about 70 kids that zone into our school, and even if they left, we'd still have 184 neighborhood kids, which is over 170, so we'd still have negative wasted space. Safety, I just want to touch on, especially after the Denali Elementary message, we do not have any views of the front area from our office, or the principal can't see out, and so it's important that we change that in the new plan. And we have no sprinklers. And I won't go on to storage, but we use every available tiny space for storage. But that's more boring, so thank you.
Thank you. Jen Neff?
Good evening. My name is Natalie Foley. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Mathematics and a Master's of Arts in Teaching. I have been a teacher in the ASD for the past 15 years. This year, I am teaching AP Calculus BC for the fourth year in a row, Algebra II, which I have taught the majority of my career off and on, and Survey of Algebra for the first time. Although I am teaching Survey for the first time, it is not the first time I am teaching remedial math. Through the course of my career, I have taught just about every course we offer, with the exception of Integrated Math. Not a single one of those classes has required me to attend special training to teach. I have a colleague at my school that has taught Survey of Algebra for the past two years that I collaborate with often. However, my concern is that the district does not respect me as a professional, and is requiring that I attend four days of training, which I am being pulled from my classroom to attend. My colleague is also required to attend the same training, despite the fact that she has successfully been teaching this class prior to this year. My survey class has 21 students. What about my other 120 students that I leave to a substitute for four days this year? As Mr. Hess brought up at the last bargaining, teacher absenteeism is a major concern for the district and for the students. So why is the district forcing teachers out of their classroom? I have never been put on a plan for improvement, so why am I not trusted to teach this course and meet my students' needs without special training? I deserve to have the respect of the district, to be the professional that I am. My students deserve for me to be in the classroom. My desire for the district to respect me as an educator is not a manufactured crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Cole. Thank you.
Thank you for taking time to listen to me tonight. My name is Jennifer Neff, and I have been a teacher, math teacher, in the Anchorage School District for 15 years. At my previous school, I was department chair for the last nine years, and my current school, I have been department chair for the last two years. And I just wanted to take a moment to talk to you about how important it is for me to be in my classroom every day. Normally, this is not a problem. As a math teacher, I try not to miss school. I miss an average of maybe one day a year. However, last year, it increased exponentially when I was required to be out of my classroom for nine days for mandatory training. It's almost two weeks. Getting a substitute for math is very difficult. I teach AP Calculus. Getting a sub for two weeks for AP Calculus is nearly impossible. At the end of the year, I had a significant drop in the amount of students that took the AP Calculus exam. It was not a coincidence. It was a large factor to do with the fact that I was gone for two full weeks. This year, I'm going to be pulled from my classroom for four days. I have other teachers in my department that are being pulled as well. We have a total of 14 days for math teachers lost in our school. I have my department coming to me. They feel overwhelmed. They feel stressed, and they're looking to me for answers. So I go to my principal. I go to the district. I say, "Can we work this out? Kids are away. We cannot be pulled from our classroom." And they all tell me the same thing. They say, "I'm sorry, but there's nothing we can do." So that's why I'm here tonight, and I'm asking you to please consider prioritizing teachers in their classrooms rather than trainings. The next teacher that comes to me, overwhelmed, being pulled from their classroom, taken from their students, I don't want to have to say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do." Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jennifer Dirks?
My name is Kelly Mulliken-Cowall. I am a parent, and I am a teacher. I have a BA and a Master's of Education in Special Education. I have been a teacher here for almost 26 years. Twenty-two years were in the general education classroom. The last four, I'm now in my fourth year, of special education. I have never spoken at a board meeting in all of those years, but enough is enough. I'm tired. Please give elementary teachers in this district the academic freedom to support every student, to address their individual needs. Give us more than 30 minutes to teach Social Studies, Hands-on Science, and SEL. But also, in all of this, please push for a fair and reasonable contract that we can be proud of together, because, believe me, none of this, absolutely none of this, is a manufactured crisis.
Thank you. Robin?
Wald.
Wald, thank you. I'll just say the first name, and you guys say your last name. How's that?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Dirks. I've been teaching for six years. This is the first time I've ever even attended a board meeting. I always let my fellow teachers do all the fighting for me, and I can't do that any longer. When I, I want to make sure that all of our voices are heard. The mandated priority plans are blocking us from meeting the needs of all of our students and learners. It's not a manufactured crisis, and I understand that you all have places to be tonight. I did not get to tuck my kids into bed, because I'm here. I have a fever, but I'm here. Please hear our voices.
Thank you. Christina Wright?
My name is Robin Wald, and I have a BA in Elementary Education, and I'm highly qualified to teach grades K through six. I've been teaching for 11 years, 10 of those in the Anchorage School District. A few years ago, I was a part of the committees to, that wrote both the second-grade academic plans that we previously used, as well as the second-grade science curriculum. We worked really hard to integrate Science and Social Studies into the curriculum to give our students more time for hands-on experiences and to do projects. The fact that with the new schedule and curriculum, I have 30 minutes to teach SEL, Hands-on Science, and Social Studies is not a manufactured crisis.
Thank you. Joan Haskell?
All right. Hi, my name is Christina Wright, and I have been a primary teacher at ASD for 10 years. I have a Master's Degree in Education and a Reading Specialist credential. I'm here tonight to bring to light the fact that the top-down mandated reading priority plans eliminated all of the writing projects in the Reach for Reading curriculum. Since we were required by the district administrators to follow the priority plans, there is now no time for students to apply the writing skills they are learning. The only way for students to obtain the necessary writing skills is if their teachers are granted the academic freedom to respond to their individual needs. The reason why we are speaking, we are seeking academic freedom is because we are professional educators who understand what every one of our students need to succeed. However, we are being micromanaged by district administrators who do not understand that the response to a child's needs happens in the classroom and not a matter of district policy. Our wish is that you will have faith in the educators that you have hired, and allow us the academic freedom to get the job done. This is not a manufactured crisis. This is a policy crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Sparrow?
Hi, my name is Joan Haskell, and I have my Bachelor's of Science and Master's of Science in Education, and probably close to 50 credits or more above that. I've been teaching for almost 30 years, and with the added SBBS program, where some of, actually, my favorite classes that I teach, and the violent students in the school, the safety of adults and students, or the other students, are overlooked. The need to have a fair contract where teachers are given respect as professionals, with a salary including cost of living increases, is not a manufactured crisis.
Thank you. Courtney Palmer? Sorry, I have to say hi to Courtney. I haven't seen her a long time. She was my son's teacher for five years.
My name's Lisa Sparrow. I've been a teacher for eight years. For the past year, I have sat at these school board meetings and have listened to teacher after teacher tell you what is going on in their school and what they are dealing with. They have testified with fear, with tears, and sometimes with so much anger, they are shaking. Teachers are not faking it. This is not a manufactured crisis.
Thank you. Jessica Thomas?
Hi, my name is Courtney Palmer. I have been a teacher for 27 years. Thirteen of those have been in Alaska, and 25 of those years have been in special education. I've never spoken at a board meeting either. I guess I don't even really have anything written down. I just decided that I really needed to get involved, rather than let other people fight my fights. Like I just heard somebody say, I never really considered it a fight, up until a few years ago, when my administrators started telling me that I needed to lower my expectations. It took a long time to wrap my head around that. I'm assuming I had to lower my expectations for my TAs. There really aren't any. So I've been working with substitutes when they do show up, and these kids with very developmental delays, you know, need more than they're getting. I'm told to lower my expectations for my kids, that I can't meet every single IEP objective. I disagree with that. I've been doing this for a very, very long time, and have been able to meet most goals. I'm also told to lower my expectations, I guess, for myself. I'm not 100% sure how to do that. Maybe there can be a training. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Is that, oh, Bryce. Bryce?
Hi, my name is Jessica Thomas. I've been with the school district for 10 years now, the last seven years as a classroom teacher. I have a Master's Degree in Education. I have, currently, I am working as a third-grade teacher at Taku Elementary. My training should provide me with the professional courtesy to teach my students. The lack of academic freedom to give all my students differentiated instruction they deserve is not a manufactured crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Martin?
Well, thank you for the time, board. So, just a couple of things. Fact, teachers are without a contract. This is not a manufactured crisis. Fact, teachers are given scripted, canned curriculum and told to implement it with little to no training, and are unable to change or cater curriculum as they see in their classrooms. That is not a manufactured crisis. I'm a volleyball, fact, I'm a volleyball coach. Two of my assistant coaches, one of them right here, and another, can no longer do their position as assistant coaches because of the extra duties that they have this year. I can't even find a replacement coach. We're losing so many different things in our schools, especially our middle schools, where our teachers that used to volunteer for things, like National Junior Honor Society, and lead those particular groups, no longer want to do so because they don't have the time to do it. We're losing those. My salary has, my salary decreased the first three years of my teaching career. It's down $10 from this year. I do not have an excessive salary. You all decided to give yourself raises and hire others to help you do the work you're supposed to do. Meanwhile, I was asked to take on additional students and an increased workload for nothing. That is not a manufactured crisis. In fact, you said, in the recent video, we talked, well, we talked about five and a half million being given from the state, and four million roughly given from retirement accounts. Yet you chose to get, got, get rid of the middle school model. Our head of HR and negotiations doesn't believe that teacher testimonies are valid, but instead, a tactic. Our human resource director doesn't even believe we are a resource. Fact, you removed the video from your website. Fact, in that video, you stated to the public and to your principals that information provided by AEA is on the district website. That is a lie. That is not a manufactured crisis. That is a manufactured lie. The crisis that we face in this district has been created by district policies and its implementation of scripted programs and the blatant ignorant, ignoring of teacher input. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gary Martin, and I have been an educator here in the Anchorage School District for 18 years, and I'm amazed how fast people have to talk in two minutes. I can't do that. My hope is simply that you're hearing the people that are speaking, that you're hearing the elementary school teachers. I know a teacher that has come back after seven years, is blown away by the canned curriculum, and can't feel like they're teaching, and actually getting through to the kids and learning, and being able to do modified instruction. It blows me away how elementary school teachers are handling this. So, you know, it's cliche, it's a manufactured crisis. I encourage you to get into the classroom and see what's going on, because people are frustrated. It's not a manufactured crisis. Elementary school teachers are amazing. I'm middle school, and I don't know how they're doing it. Middle school, we've seen all kinds of changes in the middle school with the kinds of timing of day, six of eight, five of seven. It's wearing on me. I'm an elective teacher, and bore the brunt of a few years ago, five years ago, where, you know, it was five of seven for a core, and I was teaching six of eight. I hope you're hearing what people are saying to you, and understanding it's very real. I'm not going to keep blowing away and trying to, you know, force opinions, but I hope you're actually, as a board, hearing what people are saying. And when the AEA is trying to negotiate and trying to tell you their concerns, that I hope the district is actually hearing it. And you got to absorb it, because it's real. Eighteen years of this, I've never spoken in front of the school board, and I'm sitting here going, wow, I'd rather do some other things at 9:15 at night, like I'm sure you would too. So I really hope that you do hear what they're saying and can make changes that, you know, reflect what teachers are saying to you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, was it Cooter? Did I say that right? And Lucinda? Oh, yes, thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cooter. I have been an educator for 23 years. I have a National Board Teaching Certificate, and I was just won the Presidential Award for Excellence in Teaching Math. Asking for academic freedom is not a tactic. Academic freedom means respecting teachers, our years of education, and our ability to meet the needs of our students. It means we can accommodate, elaborate, remediate, scaffold, reinforce, summarize, encourage, modify, inspire, challenge, accelerate, and/or reteach to meet the needs of our students when and how they need that met. Academic freedom allows us to do our jobs. Teach. I just want to teach. This is not a manufactured crisis. Let me teach my students. This is not a manufactured crisis. Let me teach my students. I promise you, I will do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex McKee? Did I say that right, I hope?
Good evening. Thanks for letting me be up here. My name is Lucinda Elise Jensen. I have been teaching for twenty years and I am an old social worker who did social work for ten years. I have a master's in special ed early childhood. And I want to tell you I love research and everything I do is usually based on it, if I can do it that way anyway. So, I want to tell you that I am here to say that taking away play and developmental action-based practices to replace with a passive scripted ninety-minute priority plan is a miscarriage of education for little people. In the book, Teaching with the Brain by Jensen, I share some of that last name. Got mixed up there. Okay. Reports that children in grades K through two benefit the most when direct instruction is given between five and eight minutes at one time. Any longer than that, little people tune out. So now we have a ninety-minute priority plan, which is direct instruction. Ten minutes of those minutes, you probably have them. The other eighty minutes, they may be quiet, they may have learned to tune out, but they're little zombies and we've lost them. Let's get back to the action-based sensory fun and you'll tie children in. This is not a mandatory crisis. This is how children learn. Thanks.
Thank you. I can't read this writing, but is that Laura Waite? I must have been close enough because here she comes.
Good evening. My name is Alex McKee and I've been an elementary educator for twenty years. And like some of the other folks here, this is the first time I have ever testified at a board meeting. I'm also the parent of a seventh grader who entered middle school for the first time this year. At least I was hoping it would be middle school, but unfortunately, he's entered into really a junior high school setting. That's disappointing and really concerning. I'm really fortunate because he's got a lot of resources and is a really resilient kid. But I look at the kids that I've sent on to the middle schools over the past few years and I have deep, deep concerns about how they're going to do without that team model and the extra support and collaboration that was happening for them. I'd like to express my support for academic freedom. For teachers as they make carefully considered decisions about what students are ready to learn and how best to help them grow. This is my real concern.
Thank you. Tara Bivens? Was it, what was that?
She had to go home.
Oh, okay. Brad Kerr?
Hi, my name is Laura Waite and I am a twenty-eight-year-old, or twenty-eight-year-old, twenty-eight-year teacher. This will be my last year in the district. I've taught all twenty-eight years in this district. And I have to go because I can't take it anymore. I helped install, not install, implement the middle school model. And now that you've taken it away, for some reason, at South, we now have these PLCs. We give up class time with students and we have no students in common to talk about. And yet at middle school, where they used to have teams and used to have a net to catch students who might be caught falling through the cracks, they don't have it anymore. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Please reinstate the middle school model. It made so much sense. It helped so many students. And in fact, I even had a student here who I taught middle school with. And now she's a teacher and I love it. Please reinstall it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Brad Keer and I've been educator in ASD for ten years now. And I'm here to say that these testimonies given tonight by educators and members of the public were not manufactured by AEA. This is not a manufactured crisis. If my colleague earlier was speaking derogatory of people and he was simply giving direct quotes of what these folks were saying, Mrs. Markcott, then I believe you are saying a superintendent and HR director are speaking derogatory of people. I would like to also state, how can we proceed for, excuse me, forward with negotiations with HR director at the helm in order to restore the good faith of the district? We are calling for the board to take action and request for the resignation of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Card?
Should I just start? It'll be short. Hi, my name is Jessica Frick. I have been teaching in the Anchorage School District for sixteen years and have been a teacher of elementary school for eighteen years. I was a BP teacher of excellence several years ago and I definitely didn't get that award because I could read a manufactured script. So all I want to say is that there is an imbalance created by the six hundred fifty minutes a week of the canned priority plans that I'm assigned to teach. Versus, I have ninety minutes a week to teach social studies, science, and SEO. And that's shortchanging my students and children from a well-rounded, meaningful education that they can be passionate about. I've had your children and they are passionate learners. This is not a manufactured crisis. This is an absolute crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawnee Vanderpoel?
My name's Megan Card. I have been a teacher for over a decade now, so my middle schoolers think I'm really old. I have a BA in English, dual endorsements, six HQTs last time I counted, and a, I'm a twenty-seventeen BP teacher of excellence. And I know tonight has been hard to hear, but I hope that you are listening. The low morale, the frustration with poor communication, lack of academic freedom, the loss of a middle school model, the addition of our extra teaching load, the issues in elementary education, and the feeling, quite honestly, of being disregarded and disrespected is not a manufactured crisis. It's real.
Thank you. Alisa Singleton?
Good evening. Thank you for hearing our testimony tonight. My name is Shawnee Vanderpoel. I have been teaching classroom music K-5 for fifteen years, twelve of that in the Anchorage School District. I feel very fortunate that I am given a set of standards and I am able to choose the best way for my students to reach those standards. Part of the music curriculum is allowing them to be creative and playful. Forsaking our children's developmentally appropriate play and exploration time in the name of supposed academic rigor is not a manufactured crisis. We are dealing with it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane McLaugh, McLaughlin? McLaughlin, sorry.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alisa Singleton and I am the mother of two children that attend high school here in the Anchorage School District on Niko River. And they've been with the district since they were little and it's been really amazing to watch them grow up in this district. I am also a special educator here in the Anchorage School District. I've worked for the district for nine years and I've worked as a preschool developmental, in a developmental classroom with the district for six years. I'm here to say that I'm very concerned about transitioning my students from a developmentally appropriate preschool curriculum where they learn to play, where they learn through play for more than a third of their day to a kindergarten classroom where they're going to be forced to learn in ways that don't meet their development and their special needs. And that concerns not a manufactured crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Cal Williams? I see Cal. Tommy Han, or Tammy Hanley?
Hello, thank you. My name is Diane McLaughlin. I teach at Mears. Been teaching for fourteen years now. And my concern is I have gifted the Anchorage School District with my five-year-old. And he is a wiggle, wiggle, squirm, squirm. And with like the canned curriculum where teachers have to read, I just, I worry about him and I worry about his teacher. He has fabulous, like the educators at O'Malley are amazing. My daughter's there and I didn't worry. Like she can totally handle a canned, like let's go step by step. But my little wiggle, wiggle, squirm, squirm, it's just not, it's not as great for him. And so my point is, is academic freedom for those teachers to say, okay, we have to switch it up right now. We're not going to sit here and read these prompts and move through this. We have to change because fifty percent of our class, we've lost them. And so for me, academic freedom is very important. I, I teach at a middle school. Sure, I have more kids. I have more work. But I can do that at ten o'clock at night after I put my kids to bed. I can wake up at 5:00 AM and do that extra work from the thirty new children that I teach. But what about, I guess my point is, we already put so much on elementary school teachers. How much more can we ask of those hard-working educators? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say Janelle Walton?
Good evening. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your hard work that I know that you put in countless hours as well. My name is Tammy Hanley. This is my fifth year with the Anchorage School District as a special educator. I love my job and I thank you for the opportunity to do my job. And I know that I speak for everyone else behind me. I really do love my job, that I work sixty-five hours a week. I want you to know that in the last year, my highest priority for seeking training for myself was to learn about, I feel like maybe I'm in the wrong spot for the microphone, I don't know, is to learn about compassion fatigue and secondary trauma and to take care of my own health and wellness, which I never really thought that I had a problem with. It's a fact that we're seeing an increase in the numbers of students experiencing traumatic backgrounds and/or coping with alcohol-related birth defects, while at the same time, there is a limited behavioral support for such children's real needs and their teachers' concerns about them. The, some of the extreme classroom behaviors that we're seeing are real concerns for teachers as we try to create an environment where all children can learn and all teachers go home feeling good about themselves. Our social emotional concerns are not a manufactured crisis. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Wall?
Hi, I'm Janelle Walton. I'd like to speak to you tonight about some things that are important to me as an ASD parent of three children and an ASD teacher. So I'm concerned about the middle school model. It's lost. It has never been more apparent as when I tried last night to schedule a parent conference for later this week with my daughter's eighth-grade teacher. So as I tried to use the conference scheduler, I was lost. I had no idea what her team name was, so I couldn't reserve an appointment. Then I tried to see if all our teachers were on the same team and in fact, all her teachers were on completely different teams. At that point, I stopped. I had no idea what to do. I realized, I don't even know if this is going to be a student-led conference. I have no idea what's going to happen. It was clear to me that this whole entire process was really worthless and we couldn't really call it a middle school anymore. No communication has been made to me as a parent about what was going on with that. And I can't even imagine how, you know, if I'm dealing with student-led conferences this way, how are our teachers feeling? I don't feel that this is a manufactured crisis. I'm also concerned about my paycheck. I know it's ugly to talk about money, but, you know, I receive a yearly pay every day, every year. And I'm having a tough time keeping up with costs, quite frankly. Our electric has gone up, natural gas, property taxes, cable, internet, which I shut off. Interference has gone up. My medical bills have gone up. My grocery bill has gone up. And I haven't increased my spending. I still live in the exact same house and I own the same two cars that I did seven years ago when I started working as a teacher. Nonetheless, I've noticed that my family is very much struggling. This is not a manufactured crisis. I'm also concerned about teacher intimidation. I would say more if I was braver about it, but frankly, it's, it is a concern of mine. I don't feel that this is a teacher manufactured crisis as well. And I want you to know that teachers need a fair contract as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mildred Parker? Oh, wait a minute, I missed Jennifer Harmon? Jennifer?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Wall and this is my ninth year as a life skills teacher. And my message to you tonight is that the need for a contract that ensures that the safety of our special education students and staff is not a manufactured crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Mildred Parker?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. You know, it's really late. I've got a little one at home that I did not get to nurse tonight because I thought the sacrifice was more important. I'm Jennifer Harmon and I've been an educator for eighteen years. I moved to Anchorage in two thousand and five to help open Winterberry Charter School. I have a master's degree and have taught everything from preschool to high school science in my eighteen years. I currently teach fourth and fifth grade in an open optional program at Susitna. I'm here to say that we actually do have a manufactured crisis. Our students' childhoods are in crisis, created by policymakers who appear to have little regard for the whole child or developmentally appropriate practices. I stand with my professional colleagues and demand academic freedom so I can meet the needs of my students and honor the sanctity of their childhood. I recall the back-to-school welcome letter from Dr. Bishop and I quote, "When it comes to what we want our schools to be, there is no us in them. It's all us. By working together as a team, we create an environment where everyone belongs." I just, I hope that's still true because I don't really feel like we're on the same team right now, given the rhetoric we've heard over the last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mildred Parker, are you here? Devon Hunter? And Ben Hunter? Okay, thank you. Ivan? Okay, I'm having a tough time reading this.
Is it Hoens?
Hoens? He left, okay. Barbara? Bankston? Is there anyone else that would like to testify at this time? Mr. Claymire?
Good evening. Tom Claymire, spokesperson for the Anchorage Education Association. I hadn't planned on speaking this evening and I have to say I was inspired by our members. We've been at it for two years. Feels like darn near straight through. And I can't help but be moved by the testimony and I hope that you are too, that, and, and often I'm reminded of my role as a labor liaison and I, so I have to share my observations is that I, I think we are in a crisis. The crisis is one of trust. The crisis is one of respect and that's been broken. And teachers have, they don't have a mechanism to fix it. It's got to come from above. They, they go to their principals to address issues. They, they, they try to be collaborative and productive and, and there's no other way. And so they come here as a last-ditch effort. And I find it concerning that at the highest levels, they're then met with blaming the victim. They're dismissed, that they're, there's lots of lip service, but no real action to repair that trust, to, to bring the faith. Of all, of all the things that we teach about, about bullying, about capturing kids' hearts, about how we treat each other and everything that we do is relational. And yet, it doesn't seem to apply- Um, and yet, it doesn't seem to apply to our relationship between, um, our, the employer and the employee. And, and that's disheartening. We should be a workplace that is the safest to work, that, um, makes sure that we're not, uh, bullying in the workplace, that supports our employees, that lifts them up, that builds capacity, that encourages them and empowers them. And right now, it, it very much feels the opposite of that. And so, uh, for that, I'm concerned and, and I thank you for listening to everybody's testimony and, uh, hopefully you take it to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to testify? Yes, sir. If you could give us your name and spell it, please.
Sure. My name is Kevin Fulmer, F-U-L-L-M-E-R. Uh, this is my thirtieth year teaching at Chugak High School, uh, all-around district, actually. But, uh, I graduated from Chugak High School. Uh, from my, spent my first two years at Diamond, last two years at Chugak, and continue teaching there. So my thirty years as, as an educator. I just want to point out a couple of things that I find really frustrating. Wasn't planning on talking today. But, uh, I have two sons that have gone into education as well. One has moved to Fairfax County, back east of Virginia. The other one is a second-grade teacher at, uh, Ursula Major on base. And he is a phenomenal teacher and just a phenomenal person, just an amazing job. But I find it very frustrating in his frustration as I'm pushing my, uh, career to him, which I've, I've enjoyed for the most part, but he says to me, "Man, Dad, it's my second year and I only had a contract for a month and a half, two months." And I said, "Well, uh, I hope it gets better." And it's frustrating to have to battle contracts all the time, left and right. But he says to me, he says, "With the canned program that I've talked about, I honestly feel bad for elementary school teachers. It's almost like they should get a double payday or something, even though we're all working hard. I'm just so amazed at the input that they have and the ability to make school fun." I have another gentleman who coached with me over the years. His name is Sean Murphy. Retired in May from Wonder Park. And he was extremely frustrated with, uh, he needs to have kids, uh, enjoy school. And he could not continue to push down the canned curriculum and other things that they wanted from the district. And so he stepped out of the running. So we are losing some super-good people, including, uh, new teachers, as is my son potentially saying, "Man, it might be easier to do another job and do some other things which he has skill sets to do." But with him stepping away or him thinking about it, we have to motivate and give them reasons to be here because there are just some super-good people in the district that, uh, have a lot to give. And I just hope they get appreciated and, and figured out as well. And we set aside some things to make it better for those young teachers. Um, but I appreciate your, your concern, and I hope you do hear a lot of concern that's gone on. And, uh, I've enjoyed my career. I just try and pass on to my, my sons and family because you can't quit the good fight. We got to keep standing for kids. And I'm a huge kid advocate, and I just wanted to go on record for saying so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? If you can state your name and spell it, please.
Yes. Hello, my name is Ryan Thomas. That's R-Y-A-N-T-H-O-M-A-S. Ryan Thomas. I am an elementary art teacher. I have been teaching here in Anchorage Public Schools for about eleven years now, twelve years. Um, and I'm getting up the Golden Girls right now, so I'll make it short. Manufacturing. Right now, the kids can't do it. Because, um, there's block scheduling, canned curriculum, all the standardized tests. When the kids come to me for art, which is eighteen sessions per year, mind you, eighteen sessions per year, they don't have time in their regular scheduled day for a lot of glue bottles, for a lot of scissors. So they do not know righty-tighty, lefty-loosey. There are fourth graders that I'm having to reteach how to fold paper because it has been several weeks since they have folded paper with me before. I have second graders that are putting their fingers in the wrong holes of the scissors because it is several weeks possibly between the times that I'm able to, to teach them. Um, and I know that the elementary classroom teachers do their best with the time that they have, and they don't have it. In fact, there are kindergarten aides right now that are cutting out the shapes for the students, not having the students do it themselves. Why? Because there's no time. And without those skills, these kids will not be able to manufacture. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to move forward. And, uh, if there's any other testimony we have at the end of the session or, um, next school board meeting, or you can always email us to or give us a call. Or we have met with individuals. I don't even know where I'm at.
Thank you, Madam President. I can go quickly through this. Um, before I start with the first slide, this was a request at the last board meeting to be able to share, uh, how our teachers supported in the elementary language arts program because that has been, um, what we've received feedback, the information for which we've received feedback. But I do want to address, um, wanted to let the board know that I did use the word cray-cray in response to, um, just working through concerns here. I had had, uh, email communication with Matt, uh, Tom Claymire in regard to retaliation or people feeling bullied. And I said, "Please let me know and we will investigate." And, um, it, but then no one wanted to come forward, so we were chasing and wondering what that was. Interestingly, I shared this at the board meeting as well last time, that, um, the gentleman who had come forward, who had said that he, his principal did come and see him when he found out he was signed up for testimony. Um, we looked into that because that was the only information that we had to be able to, um, respond to the concern that Tom Claymire had. And it turned out that that particular issue, when we looked into it, um, and that's the, the snippet that I talked about, was that, um, there was a good relationship between that teacher and his teacher and, or his principal, and that the principal wished him luck and at the staff meeting the next day honored him with good things. And so it was difficult, it is difficult to look into some of the, um, concerns. And there have been, um, many, many concerns in regard to planning time put into the elementary program, uh, as well as other issues at the middle school for which we want to go rally around and support. Um, but by the same token, we worry and staff worries and principals worry that, um, that would be seen as retaliation or, or calling, um, it was mentioned by a board member, possibly calling someone out. They might not want to feel that way, um, when they testify. So we were wondering, wh-what is it that we should do? And I use that term in regard to, um, cray-cray in that instance because it was difficult. Um, I apologize for that. I, I didn't want to demean anyone or anything. But we're, we have goals. We, we have some changes. It is discomforting, um, going through changes. Um, we heard tonight about wanting more professional development. We've heard tonight about wanting less professional development. Uh, we've heard about using our evening times and weekends for professional development. So then, um, I know that professional learning changed to have them during the teacher workday so that they weren't, um, impacted at their personal families. Um, and then, uh, we're going to go back to, just so you know, there, there is something to the person who said, "We can't do anything." We talked about it just this past week, uh, with staff after the last board meeting, uh, when we looked at absenteeism. Um, it is, a lot of it is, um, due to being pulled out of the classroom for additional training. So we're going to go back to having, uh, the choice of whether, um, it's your own time and being paid for that, um, the sub-salary, uh, or not. Um, coming during the day, different people have different choices depending on where they are with their own families and, and school. Um, it is difficult to make a sub-plan. It's actually easier to teach than it is to make a sub-plan when you're gone. Um, but there are, um, you know, it's just trying to respond and figure out what we can do. And every response or offer of support or investigation, um, is suspect. And I regret that, and I regret the language, um, that I used. And it is moving forward together. I, um, visited some schools on the workday. There wasn't anyone that sat around on that workday. Um, in fact, probably that workday wasn't enough to prepare for student conferences and parent-teacher conferences this week. Um, there is a lot of additional time in education that we use outside of the seven-and-a-half-hour workday that's in a contract. It is, um, probably more so what someone said, a sixty-five-hour job. I, I get that. Um, we want kids to do well. We're looking at kids to do well. We're looking for, um, programs and, and for evidence of, um, ways that we can assist kids in, in having a better life and moving through our school district and learning and being happy. Um, those are all what we want. And, you know, I, I welcome the feedback. I welcome the assistance if, if, um, and the support needed. I welcome settlement of a contract. Um, it's not as easy as just settling a contract when there isn't funds. And so, um, I wanted to take responsibility for, um, my comments. And I wanted to share that it wasn't anything different than I had already spoken about at the last board meeting. I was sharing with principals the difficulty, and I, um, used crass language and I apologize for that. I don't even know if I should have used the word crass. It was inappropriate language and I shouldn't have used that. So, um, with that, I'm going to move forward and share, uh, it was a board request to say, "Can you please share with us, um, how teachers are supported in the elementary language arts program?" And so to do that, we went to teachers. And I believe that, um, we have, um, Mary Beth. Is Mary Beth still present? Um, Mary Beth here, um, she works on the instructional support team. And she has some teachers, uh, that are going to share information about how we support, um, the difficulties in classrooms. And I, I had a, a quote in, um, my speech that I had read somewhere, but I didn't want it to be after the testimony taken. But I'm going to share it here and, and it really, it, it is the, the coexistence of, um, comfort and progress is difficult. It's difficult to create, um, that sometimes. And, and you, you will see that in, um, we had an award-winning state team in, in football, and I'm sure there was discomfort. Um, I'm going to share pictures of the library opening at Romig and West. And there was a lot of discomfort by that librarian and the teachers there to make the progress that we did. And, and I, I don't want to, um, for any reason, say that things are easy and they can just get done. There is discomfort. Um, but I believe we orient ourselves to the future and, and kids, kids will do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm Mary Beth Forhals, and, um, I'm part of the instructional, um, support team. And we just wanted to, um, come and share some of the hard work that is going on, some of the great work with coaches and teachers, um, in reading and, and language arts. So, um, for example, um, this year, I've, this first quarter, I've been, um, helping support a school that did not have a, um, instructional coach in place. Um, so just a few of the many things, um, that, uh, we've been doing at that school. Uh, one of them, uh, was I've been meeting with a first-grade teacher that, um, had questions, asked for help. And we've been setting up time to meet. Um, we sat down together with planning, um, walking through step-by-step, um, the new program, um, trying to help answer questions that she had, um, giving her resources that she thought would be helpful. And then, um, also, she had asked if I could come and model. And so we set a time so that I came in and, um, modeled a day's lesson for her to watch and observe. And not only her, uh, but the principal also, um, was able to provide coverage for her teammate, uh, the other first-grade teacher, so that she could come and observe, um, along with other staff in the building, um, that, um, would find it helpful. So, um, we did that and then met, we got to debrief and make a plan for, for next steps. So, all which was, um, valuable for all, for all of us. Um, third and fourth-grade teachers in the same building had different needs. Um, asked that I come in and, and model a short, um, piece of, uh, practicing multi-syllabic work with, uh, their kids. So I was able to stop in, um, three classrooms that morning. And, you know, those are just a few pieces of, of the many things, um, that, um, we're all working together out there for, for our kids.
Um, my, my name is Julie Graham. Uh, I've been a A.A.A. member since eighteen eighty, eighty-five? Eighty-four? Eighty- Eighty-five? Uh, I've been teaching in elementary schools, middle schools, library, um, middle schools, neighborhood schools, optional schools. And for the past two years, I've had the privilege of being an instructional coach. And I am thrilled. I'm going to say some really positive things about the instructional coach. I've been able to help implement the, um, K-2 curriculum last year. And changes are, it was everyone who met with them was introduced, like, I don't know, many years ago. So whenever there's anything new, there's a lot of angst. And so my, one of my roles is to defuse that angst and look at the curriculum. All teachers do what they do best is to teach and look at those plans and look at that curriculum and get them out of it. Because as a classroom teacher, you don't just, you don't have all that time. And the, uh, one thing I did, like Mary Beth said, uh, is I would go in in my auto lessons while the teacher's watching, so I can kind of take notes and we can talk, "Why did I do this? Why didn't I do that?" The teachers would then teach and I would take notes. And we have this collaborative, um, growth mindset about what we can do for our students. This year, like we've implemented the three-three-five, we have the priority plans. And I just want to say that there's no place in that not any minute block that teachers, that students, it's still, let alone teachers. And I've gone in in my auto, like kindergarten, not any minute block. We're bopping around all over the place. There is explicit phonics lessons. I have a bit of a speech disorder, so sorry. Just make people listen a little bit more. Um, so, oh, there is explicit phonics lessons, but there's also room for teachers to use those materials and bring in their passion and their creativity. My job as a coach is to help them buy in that and do that and talk about that and to make it, make that magic happen. There's still magic. Um, I go into the kindergarten classrooms. A lot of my time was in first and second last year and beginning to work in the three-three-five. The other big part of my job is to help teachers look at the data and really design those within groups so we can get, um, intervention set up based on student needs. Um, so that's a big part of my job that was new for the school that I'm at. And I have a couple quotes from teachers that basically just say, "Thanks for being a support and taking the time to get those data needs set up, to get, get that collaborative going." And it is an E, and it's hard. And I just am proud that I am connecting and collaborating with educators to inspire our students. So that's a li- a little bit of what I do.
My name is Dawn Offrink. Um, I'm an instructional coach. And I'm blessed because I was an instructional coach before. Um, before I reached for reading, I was an instructional coach, um, at Creekside Park Elementary. And I'm blessed with a lovely staff that really, um, has a collaborative spirit and wants to be, um, collaborative with me, and I really appreciate that. So some of the things that I do as an instructional coach, truly, I do almost anything that teachers want me to do. And I support them in a variety of ways depending on whether they're new to- And I support them in a variety of ways depending on whether they're new to our district, new to our school, new to teaching, or whether they've been veteran teachers for a long time. This is challenging for teachers. It's a lot of change. We went through Houghton Mifflin. That was a lot of change for us, too. So, I guess what I want to say about the language arts program is that one of the things that I want to kind of walk you guys through is how I've helped a grade level this year. And so, I think that might be a way to talk about how we do things where I'm at. So, for example, I have a brand-new team at one of the grade levels and they're brand-new to our district. One of them is brand-new to teaching. So, they have a little bit of a challenging group this year, both academically and behaviorally. Sometimes we have those groups. And they are working really hard to learn the program and it is a challenge for them. But they are open to having me come in and model lessons. They're open to me observing their lessons and providing some feedback. They're open to meeting weekly at grade level meetings where we chat about what we're doing and try to adjust different little pieces. I don't expect any of them to have their children sit for 90 minutes. We really have worked hard to take brain breaks, to make movement within our activities that we're doing. Those are always built in for kids and I feel like those always have been and they always will be. Teachers build those in and need to build those in for kids. No one was expecting kiddos to spend those 90 minutes sitting. We want active engagement for our kiddos. We also want very, very strong reading. I teach at a Title I school where children have to be able to read when they go on to middle school. We have to give them that gift. And I feel like with the work that we're doing together collaboratively, moving from looking at all of the whole kid, from data meetings to looking at teacher, that includes teacher observations and what they bring to the table is too. It's not just numbers and data. It's looking at this child scored this way today, but that's not their whole, that's not their number. They're not a score. They are a whole gamut of things that we need to look at. And so, we really try to do that. And then, when I help them in the classrooms, we try to look at those little kids that need different things, that need different spaces, that need different types of learning. We try to put support, we're a Title I school. We try to put extra support in classrooms that need help with more direct instruction or more ability to shrink our groups and give also some center and some writing activities that kids are needing within those programs. So, we're really trying to do something that's very balanced. And I said, I learn from these teachers every single day and I hope that they learn from me, too.
Hi, my name is Erin Binick and I'm the instructional coach at Government Hill Elementary, which is a Spanish immersion program. I made a list of all the different, some of the different things that I do to support teachers. I help with testing sometimes when they need additional time because they don't have time to test their students. I work with them on data meetings. We analyze data once we gather it. I go in and I model lessons for teachers. I co-teach. I support new teachers and substitutes sometimes with the reading program. I help them sort students for the intervention plan that we have coming up here. I help with classroom management. Sometimes they have some issues with classroom management, so I go in and support them with CHAMPs or other things. I help them understand the priority plans if they have questions about that. I help them plan for their interventions or I might model a lesson for an intervention group. I help them practice with template cards so that they can deliver those to the best of their ability. I help them navigate the new reading program because there's a lot, there's way too much that they could possibly teach. I help them not feel overwhelmed because it is very overwhelming. My main job, like Dawn was saying, is to help them any way that they ask me to, whether it's make these copies or help me help make this windbinder or can you watch my kids for a minute? Anything, whatever they need, I'm there for them. Most of the students, most of the teachers in my school are immersion teachers, so they have actually half the amount of time that a neighborhood school has. They have their groups less than three hours a day and they have to teach reading, writing, math, and everything else that they can in less than three hours a day. And oftentimes, it's two hours a day. So, they don't have time to teach even half of what the neighborhood teachers teach. So, they have to be very thoughtful about their time. This summer, I wrote daily immersion priority plans just for my teachers in grades K through two, so they would know what to teach each day in reading. And it gives them time to free up their brains from what they have to teach and they can really focus on how they teach, not what they need to teach. And I have gotten so much positive feedback. I trained all the immersion teachers in the whole district at the beginning of the year and I've gotten just amazing feedback. They're finally feeling like they know what to do now. And I just, I've gotten a lot of really good feedback about those plans and I'm really pleased at the way that they turned out.
So, okay, you can close up.
I was just going to say, this is just some of the really important work that we're all trying to work together and collaborate to help all of our kids become successful readers. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and waiting. And again, that was a request from the board and I'm glad that you were willing to come and share the good things you do for people. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
Oh, sure.
Yep, if you had questions.
Yes, Ms. Holloman.
Too much stuff. I've had several teachers say to me that when they're working with students on something, they've had the principal walk into the room, point to the schedule and say, you're supposed to be in this block right now. Would you say that's consistent with what you're telling teachers? Is that part of the program to match the times up and make sure the minutes match up?
There are a lot of reasons why we make the master schedule part of it is so that they, students can get the support that they need. And oftentimes, because the students are in special education and the way that the tutor's schedule and the supports are organized, they need to be doing what they're supposed to be doing at the time that it says on their schedule so that the people that come in and support them know that their support is supposed to be there for, to either pull that student, to work with them on a specific thing, or they're there to be there for, to support in a specific win group. There's a lot of reasons why the block schedules are made. Another reason is because they schedule them by grade level so that they can have collaboration time that's all across the grade level, so they can meet together and have that collaboration time. We try to build that in so that they don't have to necessarily meet before or after school. They have that grade level block time. But I wouldn't say that it's across the board that teacher principals come in and, hey, you're supposed to be teaching the specific thing. But I think it's just a general master schedule really helps the flow of the whole school and it helps the support, especially with the special education program. Do you guys have any?
Ms. Mitchell.
This would actually be great to have a work session on, although we could spend a lot of time on it. So, you've sat here and you've heard all of the teachers and you've probably heard them over the past few weeks. Would you refute what they're saying about having difficulty fitting what they would like into their day and the fact that it's difficult for them to, and obviously, there's a learning curve, but the fact that they feel scripted? And I guess the other question is, I've heard from so many teachers over the past couple of years that, one teacher said, you know, it doesn't work for me to do it in a large group. I have kids who are disruptive. They don't stay under control in a large group, so I'm doing small groups. I'm using my teacher discretion and I'm doing small groups. Another teacher told me that she felt that having her block of 90 minutes from 12:30 to 2:00 just didn't work for her and she would much prefer to be able to split it up into three half-hour sections. And yet, you know, to Mr. Holloman's point, they don't feel that, and you've kind of verified that they really need to stick to the schedule. So, those are the things I'm hearing and, you know, I haven't been part of the priority plan. I haven't been part of the meetings. You know, I went to the training at the beginning of the year, but from the outside looking in, it is, I don't completely understand why they can't have the flexibility to do those types of things if that feels better with the students in their classroom or if it works better with their teaching style or with what they're trying to fit into their day.
One of the things that I would say about this schedule, I can't speak to other schools. I just don't know. I only know what occurs at the school that I'm at. We do try, there have been times when we've adjusted our schedule. In fact, we're getting ready to adjust what I need time right now for kindergarten so that it can be in a different block during the day because it just didn't work at the time that it was. We have some more support and things of that nature. So, what we try to do as a staff, as a grade level, as a team, is figure out how can we address some of the needs of teachers and how can we let them move and adjust things to the best of our ability, still providing that same time for kids to have that instructional time? But is there a way that we can maybe adjust it? We aren't able to adjust it into like the three half-hour blocks, but we are able to, we were able to adjust that schedule and we've been able to adjust one of our four, five win times also where we're just doing it four days a week because they were having some challenges getting in their science and social studies. And so, we really decided that there were some other ways to get that in. We have actually about 35 kids in our four, five win group that are getting, have two teachers and they actually are getting enrichment in science and social studies. And then, we also have some really cool four, five groups going on that are reading-based, that are comprehension-based, but they're reading some really great stories from Reach for Reading. And so, those are some of the ways that we've tried to just adjust a little bit and give teachers a little bit more freedom.
And I think one piece that instructional coaches, our conversations, too, are that, you know, we really need to help schools and teachers that we're working with to look at their school, their group of kids. As teachers, we know, we never get the same group of kids every year and we have a different bit to problem solve on how we're going to adjust things each year. So, I mean, really, each school, I mean, I encourage them and we're all encouraging conversation and working as a team to try and adjust to see how it looks for, you know, our school.
So, I'm one of the people who has applied at 12:30, so unfortunately, I, this raises so many other questions and I don't know if, I don't know. I don't know where we go from here, if we do a work session or...
I think we do need to do a work session on this and I just think that there's, you know, a bigger issue here in communication and what's happening and meeting everyone's needs, not just these individual schools. And, you know, I, too, am hearing things about the planning time and what it takes to pull that together. So, one of the things I talked about to a teacher is not so much the actual issues, but what is the path to resolve those issues? And I think that's what we need to look at. And so, I do think maybe a work session would be the best place to discuss this because we are, do have limited time tonight. But thank you, ladies. I do appreciate you being here. Thank you.
So, Madam President, I did have the system for school success. If you'd like me to run through that, the school designations are being released from deed tomorrow. And if you want just a little primer on this, I can run through it in about five minutes or we can postpone it.
What is the board's wishes? We are, we, three of us are leaving in 15 minutes.
I would like to postpone it that we can get the work done well.
Okay, so, the school designations will come out tomorrow then and we'll talk about, we'll do it next time. I did have some information you can take a look on in regard to the communication with parent conferences. That's an update for this week. And in addition, just some really great successes. We had an Assistant Principal of the Year named yesterday, or Sunday, rather, from the state of Alaska, as well as, we had a ribbon cutting at Roaming West last week as well and it was, they kind of endured some time since that earthquake and not using that and it was very difficult. And that's one of the things of the progress forward. It took a little unrest at the time, so it was definitely happened. And then, we had an old school, our two first schools, West and East, compete on Friday night. And we have another win for East High School, their second-in-three-year championship. So, it was a very fun game. The kids did fabulously and we just wanted to highlight their efforts.
Although, I will tell you, my grandson was very disappointed because he was voting for West. So, what I want to do is get through this quickly because there are some action items that we need to vote on tonight and I want to do that while we have all our board members here. So, I'm going to skip board conference and committee reports and we can do that next board meeting if there's no objection. Okay? Why don't we go ahead and move into consent agenda?
My computer restarted, so your box is open.
Okay. You might have to restart the meeting. Yeah, but you can go ahead and begin.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum 052 personnel report, and the September 10th, 2018 work session, executive session, and regular session minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board members vote.
I move to approve the reinstatements of students associated with ASD incident number 1230656 and number 1238186 as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board members, please vote when you see it.
Your vote? Just give a yes vote or no vote or whatever.
The little dots are moving in the upper west corner and yes, it just came through.
Okay, the last one, Stina.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 028 and authorize the superintendent to accept a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Indian Education, in the amount of $489,314. This award is the second year of a three-year grant to create and implement UPEC immersion at College Gate Elementary School.
Second.
Board, I'm just going to give you my vote, bud.
Board members, please vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 051 and adopt a resolution honoring Senator Betty Davis.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
I thought I did say that. Yeah, I did say that at the beginning session. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Ms. Hildy and I'll let you finish.
And Member Hildy, if there's any questions regarding administration, we have expertise over here. Mark Stock can fill in.
So the non-action items are just for advisory?
Yeah, except for those three because we start moving to the next meeting. So number one, two, three.
Are moved to the next meeting. Okay.
So, yeah, if there are anything in discussion on four, five, six, seven.
So do I just ask for discussion? Okay, on ASD memorandum zero, three, zero, on contracts over ten thousand, is there any discussion on it? No? Okay. Uh, number, uh, zero, ASD memorandum zero five zero, sale of surplus property for October two thousand and eighteen, any discussion on it? ASD memorandum zero five six, the charter renewal of Anchorage Stream Academy, any discussion on it? We were briefed in a work session on all of these. And ASD memorandum zero six one, charter renewal, charter renewal of Eagle Academy, any discussion? Thank you. Um, any new business? Um, is there any, at this time, any public testimony on non-agenda or non-action items? And if so, you could just come forward. Are there any school board or administrative comments at this time? And Mr. Holloman?
I, I do have one thing I wanted to address, um, that arises from comments I made at the last meeting, but were also mentioned in the video of the administrative meeting, which was that all school board members went home from that meeting thinking that principals read the riot act to teachers that had signed up to testify. And, and I did want to make clear that I never made that comment. I've never characterized the actions of principals in the school district that way. Um, and, and I knew quite clearly that the, the interaction between the specific person I mentioned and his principal was very collegial. It, it, I mean, it's a, I know the principal, I know the person. Um, I never meant to suggest that it was an outrageous encounter, but I did mean to suggest, and I still mean to suggest, that if someone knows that signing up to speak means a visit from their principal, that it intimidates people and it will keep, it will keep a lot of people from ever signing up. I also found out from talking with someone that's retired out of the district, it's gone on for quite some time. Um, I was unaware of it because my principal never followed through on it. Um, so I didn't know that that was a thing, but it's something that's gone on for some time. And if I understood the superintendent before, uh, she said it would stop, um, I certainly hope it would stop. I, I think it violates our board policy. Um, I, I think it puts people in a, in the position that if they're going to come speak to us, they have to first prepare to speak to their principal and review what they're gonna say. And, and that simply should not take place. But also want to make it clear to principals in the district, I've never characterized them as reading the riot act to anybody. I wouldn't characterize them that way as a group. Um, I, I think their role is critical and I, I think they do a really difficult job under a lot of pressure and don't get the recognition they deserve for that. Thank you.
Mr. Donley?
Yeah, at our next work session, I would like for, on, on the schedule to be a time for the capital committee. We have a volunteer committee of individuals that deal with the capital budget to have some time to talk to us about what they think about the six-year plan that's being proposed. And in specific, I'd really like to hear from Mr. Griffin, Bob Griffin. Uh, he's prepared to report, uh, regarding comparison of costs, uh, on roofs that I think it'd be really important to hear since so much of this six-year capital plan is about roofing costs. But I'd really like to see that on the agenda for the next work, work session. Well, I'd like to see it at the next work session. Yeah, yeah.
Do we have, uh, other members who would like to see that in the work session? We have to have two or three people interested? Anyone else? Well, I know it's late, but I will just share, I don't talk much about what it was like when I was a teacher, um, but I quit. I don't quit at many things, but it was the worst year of my life. It was, um, not because my students weren't awesome, it was because it was a really hostile work environment and that was not the experience of any other teacher in my district. It was unique to me. Um, that doesn't mean it wasn't accurate or true or, um, just made life really terribly miserable, um, to a really extreme extent. So we have really good things happening in our district. I'm in the schools. I see people who are doing fabulous with the language curriculum, but that doesn't mean it's going well everywhere. And our duty is to make sure all of our students are prepared for success in life. And so, uh, you know, I've talked to Mr. Clay Meyer about how we can meet with teachers just in a more casual way so that we can really improve what we're doing here. Part of it's communications, part of it's how we talk and value teachers and, um, I just want to reiterate my commitment to making sure our teachers feel supported in the classroom. We can't do it in not maybe all the perfect ways everyone wants, but we can make sure we're working as a team and, and really reinforcing that goal. If there's no other comments, we'll move to adjourn. Do, do you have to move to adjourn?
Yeah.
I move with adjourn.
I'm really gonna use this, thank you. Thank you, Katie. I feel so bad for everybody.